So if you'll give us, bear with us for just a few minutes and we'll get started.
I thought Sarah wasn't.
Sarah volunteered to take.
Just trying to throw you under the bus.
For the record, Mike said he'll take my place anytime he likes.
On the floor, they want to break it. I don't know why I'm even getting this out, there's nothing in the package.
Yeah, there's not a lot of information.
Just doing a meeting on the city traffic. I'm doing it on my iPad, no maps to read.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Are you ready? Right, we want to welcome you all to our county council meeting tonight. The second part of it will be combined with the planning commission members and we'll have them come up on the stand with us once we get that started. If you have cell phones, if you turn them off, if you have to take a phone call, if you step outside, it'd be greatly appreciated. We'll start our meeting tonight with a prayer and a pledge and that will be done by Member Newton.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here this evening as members of a community, we're grateful for the community in which we live. We ask you to please bless us that we will have Thy Spirit to be with us as we discuss the needs and desires of those who live in our community. Please bless all those in our community who are in need of Thy blessings and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions with any items on our agenda, members of the council? Motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Member Cannon.
Second.
Saying by Member McConnell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Conflicts of interest with any members of the council on any of our agenda items? Okay, seeing none. The next part, so that everybody understands, we've got an item on here, it's talking about the Taggart's whole recreation area. So what we'll have, we'll have our first public comment period and basically for anything you have maybe pertaining to the Taggart's area or anything in general as far as the county goes. When we get to the discussion of the Mountain Green Town Center zoning, once we have, and that will be kind of conducted by Member McConnell, but we will have a separate public comment period for that agenda item. So don't feel you have to come up at the first and say your comments because we will have a specific comment period for that agenda item. So with that, we'll have a public comments. Brock, yep. If you would state your name.
Yeah, my name is Brock Bates.
Just say, can you hear?
You're okay? Yeah, my name is Brock Bates. I'd like to thank Chairman Aslam and the other councilmen and councilwomen to give the opportunity to comment on the Henntag section of the Weaver River. Just real quick, I brought each of the council members. So you've probably noticed last year there were some signs gone up. Those are kind of spearheaded by myself, just trying to bring some education and awareness to kind of what's going on up there. Very busy area of the river all summer long and we see a lot of trash, we see a lot of people recreating there, fishing, all sorts of things, so go take one of those. Not just a copy of the signs that I've made, they're still currently up there, they're just experiment, but I've had some pretty good positive feedback from those. But just real quick, full disclosure for myself, I am the moderator for the Friends of, a Facebook group called Friends of the Henntag. We had 10 new members this week, there are currently 148 members in that group. That group is dedicated to people that want to be involved with the Hennifer section of the Weaver River from the Hennifer to Taggart mainly, and anybody that wants to help do projects as far as trash cleanup, awareness of safety, things of that. I'm also a member of what's called, members of the, I'm sorry, excuse me. It's called Henntag Tuesdays, which is a kayaking group based off of the Utah Whitewater Club. They meet every Tuesday to kayak that section of the river. They kayak from 5:30 to dark at night all summer long. They'll probably start here next week or the week after if given weather permitting. Through with the Morgan Newcoff, I'm an avid fly fisherman, kayaker, and I consider myself a river steward. Concernably, I spend probably 75 days a year on the Weaver River in Morgan County. Currently, yesterday, I looked at the US Census 2018, Morgan population is 12,045 with the majority of those people living downstream. So anything that will be addressed with the Henntag as far as safety, cleanliness, increased use, but positive use is going to be a positive benefit for everybody that lives in the valley. I did provide some pictures and stuff, so if you guys want to come up after, follow in the discussion. I do a lot of river cleanup myself, there's a lot of other organizations that do a fair amount of river cleanup. One of the biggest things that's lacking at the takeout area, which is known, which is termed the takeout, which is the area that's being proposed as a recreational area, is trash cans and restrooms. Donna from Destination Sports, she provided porta-potties last year, I believe on her own funds, which is huge because then you don't have people dedicating, urinating outdoors or in the river or in the water. So that's huge as far as that goes. The other thing is lack of parking. Anyone that's been up there on a busy weekend knows how congested that section of roadway is. One lane at best and all the cars that you'll see up there, I have some photos if you guys are interested, that's a takeout, that's half the cars. If you go to the Hennifer Foot In, just off the Hennifer exit where the DNR site is, that site's designed for parking, that's completely full. So whatever you guys are seeing, if you're driving us around a fairly busy weekend, is that's just half the vehicle traffic on the river. Any given day, I'll kayak to take out Henntag Wave or Taggart Falls Wave and on a busy Saturday I can count 300, 400 people in a couple hours just tubing and wrapping down. So we're getting substantial use out of this section of river which is in the county and I think anything we can do to promote safety, cleanliness, some trash cans, get the trash out, you would not believe the amount of trash that floats downstream from that area and all areas of the river. I used to hit more trash for myself from the golf course to Stoddard Lane than I do probably from the Henntag because that's actually more focused for someone to park, or is more focused by other groups. But I'd just like to thank you guys for the opportunity to comment. If you have any questions or concerns, I invite you to get in touch with myself, maybe join some of these Facebook groups, especially Friends of the Henntag. A lot of photos, a lot of pictures of what's kind of going on, some of the concerns, some of the ideas to fix the area or improve the area. So I hope the council will take it really seriously, seriously this matter just because the use of this is just getting larger. 10, 15 years ago, you'd use it, you'd not see the anonymous people use it today. Busy July 4th weekend, you can get out of some of these spots that are kind of rest areas and there'll be 3, 400 people just lined up on the actual river, saying, floating into the water. With that, I thank you guys for your time.
You, your handouts had this document at the back of them, I don't know if you intended to give that to us. Thank you.
Any other comments? If you'll state your name for Stacy, we would appreciate it.
Certainly. John Lanifeld. I currently reside on the lower level of the Cotton Woods. I had a conversation recently with Member McConnell about a problem that I think has become exacerbated in that area there and that's with the roads. Where I live, there are significant potholes, the road is deteriorating rather rapidly. Member McConnell was kind enough to tell me that there's no money to repair the roads. And so I have a question, I guess, to the councilman, and that is simply what is going to be the answer to this problem because there are areas where the roads are becoming almost impassable and those potholes could very well result in damage to vehicles or other things could occur. And I think maybe many of you are aware that we have a serious problem with the roads in that area there and I'd just like to know what some of your thoughts are with respect to how that's going to be resolved.
Okay?
That's all.
Appreciate it.
Maybe it's just my road, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not. Wish it was, but no.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Paul Burnett. I work for an organization called Trout Unlimited, we're a nonprofit cold water conservation organization. I coordinate our Weaver River restoration program, which is focused on native fish restoration and improving fishing in the Weaver River. We've, as an organization, over the last eight years, we've invested just about $2 million in the Weaver River on restoration work, fish passage work, and seven pretty major projects in Morgan County. So we're really invested in what happens here, we really value the river that runs through Morgan County. I just want to compliment Members Tina Cannon and Mike Newton for taking on the issue of the recreation at Taggart. There are a lot of big issues that we still need to address and I believe that as a collaborative group, we're really starting to step in the right direction, so thank you both. In addition, I think the improvements in signs that are being proposed this year are necessary. It shows ownership by the county, it's also indicative that the county is committed to solving problems that span different jurisdictional boundaries, so thank you for that. As an organization, I just want to just state that we're committed to improving and investing in water and recreational infrastructure in the Weaver River and to improve the river for a broad group of stakeholders. So we're committed to continuing investment and think that what's proposed tonight is a positive step on Weaver. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Krista Rickel and I also live in the Cotton Woods. And I am enjoying the river and the things that are going on up here. I've noticed that some of them are private and personal and some of them are commercial and so my questions to the council would be, as we consider these improvements, which I think are exciting for the area and giving more ownership to that area and broadening maybe the uses of it, what consideration there is to the commercial uses and the people who are profiting from that to participating in that financially through any licensures or permits that they are given in allowance to use it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, motion to grab a public comment?
So moved.
My name is Linda Smith and I live in North Morgan and I'm in the outdoors a lot. I go up by the Taggart's area. I think it's very imperative that you do get the trash containers up there and the porta-potties. It's just essential and my thinking is in the public safety line. I don't know what you have in mind, but I have spoken with Chris Horomaltokia, who is with State Parks and they do the portoning, I believe, off the river. And I know that they have issued tickets in the past and I don't know what becomes of those tickets. I just thought that it would be very imperative for the safety of the citizens, all of them that are on the river and those in the county as those people who are recreating on the river leave, eliberated and pass through our counties. I think it would be imperative that we set a precedent that the river is not a drinking bar for people to go up there and take their cooler full of beer and get eliberated, be liberated. There's a lot of children on the river and families. There's also, as I understand, some few issues of lootiness up there on the river. So I think it would be in everyone's best interest and our safety that those are addressed and tickets be given and prosecuted so that a precedent is set that Morgan is not a place for them to go and do those things, but a place for them to go and enjoy our beautiful river. The other item they do is they don't want to take their cans out with them, they don't want to even carry them over to the trash sometimes, so they fill them with water and sink them to the bottom of the river. I really do appreciate your taking this item on and that you would look out for it for all of us and thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, motion to grab a public comment?
Second.
Saying by Member McConnell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Member Newton, item number one.
Okay, I think that the public comment gave a pretty good view as to what the issues are on the river and I think everybody here kind of understands what those issues are. This is a complex issue because there's over a dozen entities or groups that are involved and have a stake in the river. Some of those were represented tonight, some of those folks are here as well. State Parks, who does the law enforcement on boats and tubes are considered boats for that regard. Morgan County, Summit County, this crosses county lines. Department of Water Quality, DWR, DNR, Trout Unlimited and anglers, private landowners, farmers who use the water for irrigation, Cement Plant, UDOT, the railroad, I could go on and on and on. It's a complex issue. I don't expect to resolve that issue with this, I don't expect to resolve the issue tonight and I don't expect to resolve the issue over the next two or three years. However, what has really happened in the past, I believe, with the council and with the county and that area is those who've gotten involved have looked at it, they've talked to those who are invested in it and the problem has become so large that they give up and walk away because they don't know where to start. I'm not saying I know where to start, I don't know the exact place to start. So I'm going to start with the very first step that I think we need to do and that is, number one, we need to recognize this as a county-owned facility, it is a county-owned piece of property and it is, whether we like it or not, a de facto public facility. It's being used as a recreation access. I think we need to recognize that as a county and so my proposal initially is that we recognize that this is a public recreation access to the river. The reason that I want to make sure that we designate it as such for the county is because this issue will not go away. It's going to increase, the volume of people has increased. A recent survey noted that the Weaver River is the second most recreated river in Utah, second only to the Provo River. And some estimates say that there's thousands of people there on weekend days during the summer and I believe it, I live in Croydon, I get off on that exit and I see the hundreds and hundreds of people standing on the bridge there drinking their cans of whatever.
Refreshment.
So it is an issue and it is happening. I would like us to recognize it because I don't want this, the last thing I want is to see us throw some money at something and then next year or when it comes budget time, we don't appropriate anything to it and it gets pushed down and ignored. So the number one item is to recognize it as a county river access, call it what you will. We could call it a park, we could call it a river access, we could call it whatever you want. I'm going to suggest that we call it a recreation access.
So Mike, this is, it's, the area you're talking about here, this is a county road?
Correct.
And it's also providing access to landowners, to their private property?
It's also providing access to landowners, their private property and everything. This proposal, what does it do for their access? How does it affect them?
I'm not proposing any type of closing of access or restriction of access at all right now, simply designating the area as a county access. And there would be no reason to close off access, I don't think we could ever safely do that and still provide for emergency management. I wouldn't suggest that either. It is a road. What we're really talking about is designating the sides of this road as part of that access.
Mike, in your research, and thank you for doing all this by the way, do you know if Summit County in the Hennifer areas, have they designated that as a recreation access?
So Summit County is in kind of the same boat. We had a meeting this week with several of the stakeholders, half a dozen of the stakeholders, including a council member from Summit County. The parking lot that's primarily used as the parking fort, and actually if you look on Google Maps, it's designated the Weaver River float parking lot. It's actually owned by DWR. It's an angler access is what it's supposed to be. So Summit County does not own the property there, nor do they own the property just off the freeway. UDOT actually owns a portion of that, DWR owns a portion, the railroad has a portion, which again adds to the complicated nature of this. Summit County is interested in helping to work on this.
We believe that's where most of the boaters enter into the river, is that right?
Correct, most are entering there. There are some that enter at the Croydon exit, although not near the volume, there's not enough parking there for people to get there. At times of high water, you can't get underneath the bridge into Croydon. So they are portaging there typically, which is also a hazard and an issue. So Summit County has committed to working with us on signage and their desire and our desire is to have similar signage, which is part of this process. We need to have a way of helping people understand that there are risks involved in getting on the river. They need to take care of themselves, they need to take care of their trash, things like that, which is something that has been done by private citizens and I commend their efforts. They've done a great job at that.
So Mike, what's the difference, I mean you're saying a recreation area as opposed to a park? At one time we was talking about a park, why are we going to recreation?
I don't know if it matters, to be quite honest with you. You know, we have a rifle range that we pay out of our parks budget. I think we could call it whatever we want. I don't feel like in its current state it can be considered a park because right now, all it is is a road with a steep drop-off on two sides of it.
It's an access.
It's an access. So right now, I feel comfortable calling it a recreation access and not a park. Now, if at some point we're able to do some improvements in the future, and I'm talking way down the road, then maybe we do call it a park, but for the time being, I think we call it what it is. To me, it's semantics, but I'm calling it an access.
I think that's fairly accurate.
Okay. Any other questions for Member on this item?
Is the property still for sale on the other side of the river?
To my knowledge it is. Now, there's no access to that, but to my knowledge it is. Okay, good to know.
So you're just looking for a motion for this designation?
Well, I'm just looking at this, because we got number two.
Yeah, so, I mean, I want to treat these as two separate items. I'd like to have a motion on number one and then talk about number two and where we go from there.
Chair, I can make a motion.
Okay, Member Cannon.
Chair, I'd knew that we designate the Taggart's Recreation Access area off of the Taggart's exit as a recreation access. Do you want a facility on it, do you want it just recreation access?
Let's call it recreation access for the time being. There may be a need, and Jen can confirm this maybe, to do some type of resolution to officially designate it. And if so, we can do that at a future point.
I think you're fine to do this without the resolution, if you'd like a resolution, we could definitely move forward with that.
Okay.
I've knew that we create the Taggart's recreational access.
Any motion by Member Cannon, a second?
Second.
Member Valentine? Any questions on the motion?
So if we're gonna, so if we're gonna do signs and partner with Summit County, then I guess we would have to have it defined exactly.
That's the second.
That's the second, I mean, we'll get into a little bit of that.
Okay, so I guess pardon my question to Jen, if we're just designating this as a recreation area, where does that put county liability? As, I mean, you got the parks, we're designating this different.
It basically, like Member Newton said, is a de facto recreation facility already, I mean, access already. We're just officially, you're officially saying, you're admitting that that's what it is because you haven't posted as no parking, you haven't restricted it or anything.
We're supporting that it continue to be used for that officially.
We already own the property, so the liability probably exists now. Yeah, you're aware of what's going on and you're just publicly saying that's okay with us. I mean, funding is a little different question, we could talk about if we need to on item two and then...
Well, I just want to make sure there's not an issue from your standpoint as far as the county goes.
Well, I mean, it's a highly dangerous activity. If someone jumped in Hennifer, if you had a sign in Hennifer right now tonight that said Morgan Henntag and someone hopped in, I'm guessing they wouldn't make it under the bridge. It may be going too fast that they can't portage and so then, you know, you've got a situation right there. It's highly, highly dangerous, so, I mean, we're either in the, we're in the business of supporting it or not, so if we wanted to close our area down, the county property, and just say we don't want to participate in that, then that's an option, but here we're just saying, yeah, you can use this to get in and out of the river here. But I'm sure there's signs that say, you know, limit your own risk. I mean, the county can only do so much on the waters which are owned by the state, but I mean, it is a dangerous thing and you'll have, I mean, as more people are there, you'll probably have accidents and injuries and maybe worse, so I don't know what we can do to mitigate that honestly, other than signs and enforcement.
Okay, no other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a little more clarification. So the motion passes, so we're going to go to number two, Member Newton.
Okay. Now that we've designated it as an official county recreation access, I feel like we need to put something forth towards it, okay? I recognize that to really resolve the issues there, we would have to invest a significant amount of money and resources. The county does not have the money and resources to really resolve the problem immediately. There are a lot of organizations who are partner organizations that I think will be willing to help with this project. There are grant opportunities out there as well that can help both in the planning stages and in, you know, to make this a better area. But I suggest that we spend a small amount of money to do some minor improvements and to provide some very basic amenities at the location. Last year, Destination Sports paid for two outhouses to be there for the summer. I recognize the fact that two outhouses is not going to be sufficient for thousands of people and I'm not suggesting that it is, however, I also don't see the, a lot of good in putting 20 or 30 outhouses there either. So, in an effort to keep this from getting out of control as far as costs go, I'm suggesting that the county pay for a couple of outhouses for the summer, and we can discuss, you know, what that really looks like. Signage to go in. We'll, we'll, we'll design that signage, and some of that's already been started and discussed along with the partners that are involved in that, including that list of folks that I read at the beginning of this. And, and we'll hopefully get some signage to, to match what will be at both ends of the HenTag stretch. And then the last item is, as was noted, parking is an issue. It's an issue because, because of the way that road is right now, there's, on the riverside, there's about a four-inch, five-inch drop. Because the gravel and stuff is left off, there's no shoulder to the road. So small cars can't really pull off on that side. Trucks and SUVs do, and, and they park on that side. On the other side of the road, there is a small shoulder, and then there's a large ravine. I would like to get some fill material into some of that ravine, and some gravel to put on the sides of the road to add some parking. I'm not talking about adding hundreds of parking spaces, we're talking about adding, even if we can add twenty or thirty spaces, that would be enough to help alleviate some of the congestion. One of the things, and Donna has a picture of this, I believe, where people have actually gotten out and setting up their grills in the middle of the road, and had a barbecue there. Well, that's fine and dandy, but when there's hundreds of people trying to get in and out, that's not safe, and we can't have that. So, we need to provide a place where people can get off the road. We do have a source where we can get fill material at no cost. But the county would have to pay for trucking, either using our own equipment when we can, which we can't always in the summer because we're busy with roadwork and other things. Or we can pay a contractor to haul that material. So what I proposed is that we spend a total of ten thousand dollars. Now, the next question is, well, where do we get that funding? Well, there's several different places we could get that funding. And, and Jen can clarify this for me, but as I understand it, in order to use any of our, our parks or impact fee funding, this has to be part of our plan. It is not part of our plan. So I think when we reevaluate our plan, which we should do before budget season, maybe we include this, we'll, we'll have that discussion. For the time being, I think we look at other sources for funding for this year. Some of that funding, we may have to run through, you know, our, our parks or recreation budget line items, but I believe there is some funding. We do have balances in our general fund, we have balances in our capital improvements fund. I believe that we could use funds from either of those, should we choose to. So my suggestion is this, we pay for a couple of outhouses, maybe three or four, I don't know, whatever we feel is sufficient. We spend a couple thousand dollars on signage. And we pay for dumpsters or garbage cans. Now, the, the item that's gonna come up, I know, is that if we, if we have a dumpster there, are people going to dump mattresses and tires and all kinds of things? The shorter answer is yes, they probably will from time to time. And any dumpster, that's going to happen. So, we could talk about doing smaller cans to try to alleviate that. We can still do a dumpster and just deal with that when it happens, it will occasionally. When I spoke with our contractor who does the hauling for us, he indicated that he believed that we could place it in such a place there where it won't be seen quite as easily from the river, or, excuse me, from the freeway. And that would hopefully discourage people from pulling off the freeway and dumping.
Didn't Steve Tuttle pay for one to be there as well?
Yes, so in, in years past, there has been such a high volume of trash there, and people dumping things there, that Taggart's Grill actually paid for a dumpster to be placed there for a time because their dumpster was being filled by people coming out of the river. So, all of these things are things that have been done by private citizens or, or companies to try to alleviate the problem, and I applaud their efforts in doing that. I'm just asking that the county take responsibility and, and take care of those items.
Questions for Mike?
So, tell me again where you think the funding source is?
We have two accounts that I think we could pull these funds from. One is just our, our fund balance from our general fund. There's about, well, there's a significant amount there, this would be a very small portion. And then our capital projects fund is also, has more than enough money to do this. I recognize that, obviously, and Stacy can help us negotiate how those funds need to route through the proper accounts to get to where they need to be, so that we're, we're paying out of the proper accounts. But just to be clear, there are fund balances to, to help cover this.
So, part of that, Stacy and I have this discussion, and that's the, the paper that you see. We have several different options for how to track it, depending on how the council would like to, to go forward. We can either designate it under the park line items, and create, the same way we have the fairgrounds and the rifle range, we can add a Taggart's Recreational, you can ignore the F, it's an RA. Or we can create a separate department. So depending on who's going to manage it, that parks department is already managed by Brett. So if we're going to have this part of that, it can, it can go under that area, and we can use that number that I've written there. Or we can create a separate department, the same way we have for Parks, Airport, and County Recreation. We can put it in that forty-five thirty, and designate the different line items for the expenses there. Or we can put it under County Recreation. That will be complicated by that is the, the new sales tax item is coming out of that, will be that, where the expenses that we use for that county recreation, once we take over from the school district and the city, that's probably gonna, going to be broken out into several different line items there. So it does, in my mind, it makes the most sense to have it as a separate department moving forward, and we break it out into different expenses, line items going forward.
Come budget time, we can reevaluate and discuss what may be needed for the coming year. I think this year will give an opportunity to figure that out. I did want to mention one other item, looking at Lance here, reminds me. There is a portion, so I, I submitted a, just a photo that had some shaded areas where I suggested we put some, some fill material. There is a portion of that on the northwest corner there, that's closest to the off-ramp, that is part of the floodplain, that Lance brought to my attention. That would require more than just dumping fill there. So for the time being, I'm going to suggest that we do fill further to the north until we have an opportunity to have that evaluated and decide how to, to deal with that corner that is in the floodplain.
So on our drawing here, are you talking the, a, where it's, the arrow is, it says fill area, not the one that says minor fill area?
Correct.
And you're, are you talking just where the arrow is actually located?
It's basically, that floodplain comes across, and is basically that bottom, if you can see where those trees kind of stop, those big trees. Basically cuts across right there.
Okay.
So instead, we do as much fill as we could with the funds that we have left after we do signage, have money set aside for restrooms and for trash. The rest we can use for, for hauling fill material in there.
Okay, so you've mentioned signs on both ends. So you're talking about putting signs on Summit County's side also?
No. There will be signage put there, Summit County is working on funding to do those signs. So they would pay for those signs. We would like those signs to be cohesive, to match. So they would have the same verbiage, they'd look the same. One would be on our end, they would take care of theirs on their end.
Okay, Lance, question for you, because I don't remember. Our sign ordinance. Can we do a four-by-five?
These would be public informational signs, so I think they would be exempt from restrictions.
Okay.
Just like a road sign.
And you're putting all these at the Henfer, at the HenTag, at Taggart's, correct?
Right now, I think so, there may be some need for signage at the Croydon area. I think we need to explore that a little bit more. And I'd like, what I'd really like to do is continue to have some discussions with the stakeholders. That's that list of folks that I mentioned at the beginning. And I'd really like their input on this, as to, you know, what they feel like is going to work. Because, as I mentioned, this is a bigger problem than just Morgan County. Those commercial rafters who raft the river, they understand some of the problems and where those are on the river. Some of the signage, maybe some small signs that are along the riverbank, telling people, this is the place to get out. Don't go any further, things like that. We may talk about some small signage in the Croydon area to tell people that they need to get out and portage because it's not safe to try to go underneath that bridge.
Okay, and who are you gonna have do all this?
So, we will go through and determine what needs to be on the signage. I can bring that back and just let the council review it, in case there's any objections to what is on the signage. And then we'll, of course, contract with somebody to actually do the signage.
Well, but I mean, who's gonna be responsible to get the signs put up, to take chair of this?
Chair, if I can make some comments, maybe it'll open that discussion. As Member Newton has indicated, this is an extremely complex issue that we're dealing with here. But I think we have a fairly simple request, and I think we need to try not to overcomplicate this request. This is county property, it's county roads, it's county shouldering on that one side. It's basically just a public works project. And I think that if we need to do additional funding for it, we just do a budget resolution and add funding to the Public Works Department, have Mike work with Public Works to complete this project. They can install the signs, they can do the shouldering, we can explore a couple different ways for hauling fill. I've made some requests, inquiries on different options there that we can discuss later as we get to that point. And I think that we can handle this with just Public Works and not make this a big deal. And that's what I would recommend we do with it, so.
I agree.
I was wondering who's gonna do this.
I think we just let the guys we've already hired to deal with our properties handle it.
All right, any more questions?
Yeah, I got a few questions, just on, quick questions on dumpsters. So, the dumpster that Steve had out, was that on his property, or was that on the, this road, access road?
From what I understand, he had one placed over on this access road.
And what, what size dumpster are you thinking then?
When I spoke with, I don't think I wrote it down here. With our, with our contractor, he suggested a thirty yard, I think it was. No, that sounds way too big.
That's way too big.
That's way too big. I can't remember what it was.
Is there still a dumpster at Devil's Side?
There is not.
So people would need a place to put their...
So there, there are no trash receptacles between the, the put-in and the take-out.
Still, last, last year at the, the different groups, there were several different groups that took out just tons of trash along the river.
So one of the big issues that happens on the river is that people go to Walmart and they buy their little tubes, right? Little tubes that are rated for swimming pools, and they say right on them, using a swimming pool only. Well, they get two tubes, one of them they put a foam cooler in, and they fill it full of their beverage of choice, and they strap it to their other tube, and they jump in the river, in Hennifer. And they come down, and three hundred yards into that stretch is what they call the rock garden. Well, their tube hits the rocks, they pop, and their beverages go in the river, along with the foam cooler. Pieces of, of tube go floating down the river. I, there is probably not a day in the summer that I don't go up that freeway going home and don't see somebody walking down the side of the freeway with either a tube over their shoulder or no tube at all. Taggart's Grill gets people two or three a week at least, walking in there with absolutely nothing, saying, can I use your phone? Because they lost their phone, their wallet, their keys, whatever, in the river. This is the kind of stuff we're dealing with on a, on a regular basis. So yes, a trash, a place to put trash is definitely needed. Are, are people going to always use it? Probably not. But if it gets even a portion of the trash out of the river, I think it's well worth it.
I agree.
For the record, I didn't do any of those things when I said I went down the river. Found some eyes, and that was it.
They had some gentlemen, not long ago, that went to a store and stole, blow-up air mattresses and decided to go down the river on those. It did not end well for them.
All right, any other questions, comments? Motion on your item?
Chair, I'll make a motion.
Member Kilmer.
I, and this may or may not cover everything you want to do, and so it may need an additional motion on, on the other end of it. I would, let me get back to that page so I have things in front of me. I would make a motion that we approve signage and the fill and basic site work outside of the floodplain, right? We're talking floodplain, not floodway.
Correct, correct.
Outside of the floodplain. I'm talking slow because I know you guys are writing, and Stacy's typing. To be done by the Public Works Department. In conjunction with Mike, providing the necessary verbiage for the signs.
That's it?
No, I'm waiting for you to write. And necessary verbiage for the signs, and then all of that installed with funding to be paid for initially, out of Public Works. With those costs tracked. And submitted as a budget resolution by Member Newton for making that, making their budget hold. And I'm gonna leave this a little bit, so, that's the, that's the motion, okay? And I'm gonna leave this a little bit open-ended because I want, between Mike and Brett working together, I want them to come up with the best, most efficient, cost-effective way of doing this. If we want to amend this motion and add a maximum amount we spend on signs or something like that, I'd be open to that. But I think there's two or three different options for hauling that material, and I don't think Mike can give us those exact numbers tonight, so I don't want to assign a number to that. I want to say, leave that open, let these guys work that out. I think they can probably get it pretty inexpensive and make that happen. So, that, that was my motion.
You think that, Stacy?
I'll second that, but, and we include, I don't, I heard dumpsters in there?
See, I told you, you'd probably have to do a second motion.
Do we want that place a limit?
My brain was on the fill and those kind of things, so. That's what he's asking right now.
That's what I should ask about dumpsters.
So if you want, if you want to do an amendment or just a second...
I should amend that, that motion if we could.
And add...
And add, again, working with Mike and Brett, the, what size or where you're placing the dumpsters.
So we have a second, right, so we can discuss?
Yeah.
Here's my discussion on the, Daryl seconded.
So are you mending this and adding the dumpsters, Member Valentine?
Yes.
Are you putting the yardage or just adding dumpsters?
Well, right now, I don't think we know, besides do...
Am I allowed to discuss this amendment before we get a second on the amendment, or, how does that work, Chair?
I can second the amendment, then you can discuss.
Okay, so what I would suggest on the dumpsters is, being somebody that deals with mattresses and lazy boys and their dumpster all the time, if you put those bigger dumpsters there, they will fill. They will fill with that kind of stuff that you can't control. If you use the county's dumpsters, it's, it's a little more expensive as far as our cost per month for tipping and that kind of stuff.
You're talking the, the big cans.
The big cans, the big round, black ones.
Like we use in some of the parks.
That's the ones. But in the end, you're not dumping as... But in the end, you're not dumping as, you're not dumping all that big stuff, and so I think it kind of evens out. And I think it, you know, if they can't fit a king-size mattress in it, I think it's to our benefit. So, I would recommend we just use our county dumpsters we already have and just make it another stop for Robinsons.
I'd be fine with that, and perhaps we do two of those large cans, and hopefully that's sufficient.
That work for you?
How often do they pick those up?
Once a week.
So, so that, yeah, the, the normal route is weekly, but if you need more, then you just pay extra for the extra days. And it would be whatever route they're picking up, the Taggart's Stop.
Correct.
For those homes.
So, is there a proposed maximum amount? Mike spoke about ten thousand dollars. I don't know if you're including that in your motion.
And Stacy's reminding us we have to indicate which accounts from and to.
Is there, are we capping the amount at ten thousand, taking out of?
General plan.
Well, I thought we, we decided we'd take it out, and the motion was to take it out of Public Works.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what the motion is, the dollars coming out of Public Works. It was not a dollar amount.
Case. Yes, roads. Well, not Class B, the other, the other roads. Because a lot of what he's talking about there is shouldering that county road, and that's where that would be coming from anyway. On your amendment, didn't you say both porta, two porta potties, or did you just say dumpsters?
I said dumpsters. I thought you talked to pork.
I did not do porta potties. Porta potties and dumpsters are the two I knew I was gonna forget, so.
Uh, yeah, for, for the time being, that's what they had last year. Again, I recognize that doesn't resolve all the problem. That, that's not gonna hold everybody, but if it keeps one person from, you know, doing their business on the side of the road, I would rather that that be.
So, you're putting, so you're putting a, a cap on this, ten grand, what are you doing?
No.
So, you're not putting a cap on it?
No, we're, if we're gonna, if we're assigning porta potties, then they're there. And if you, if you say up to a certain amount, does that mean you're gonna go pick them up when you hit that, that amount? And if you're?
No, I'm talking about, Member Newton talked about spending ten K.
Yeah, I had talked about doing that. I don't want this to get out of control budgetary-wise. I don't want us to spend so much that it, it's out of control. So, if, if we need to put a cap on the entire project at a certain amount, or, you know, a certain range, I'm comfortable with that. Again, we don't know what the fill and that kind of stuff is going to cost exactly, but we can talk about it.
So, one of the things that we, I'd like to remind everyone is, if we track this separately, then we, we do have the in-kind for any grant proposals that we would use going forward. So, we do need some way of tracking it separately.
Okay, the only thing is, I'm, I'm reluctant to not put a cap on it. If we have to put a cap on it, and let's see where that takes us?
Well, that was my comment about putting a cap on the signage and that kind of stuff. I would like to leave your, your fill and fixing up the road edge and stuff like that as what it's gonna take, but I think it's gonna be considerably less than the five thousand that he has there.
I think Mike's original proposal was to cover the cost of the outhouses and the dumpsters and the signage first. Use whatever else was remaining to do as much as the fill as possible up to the ten thousand dollars. There's enough space there. I mean, we could put hundreds of yards of fill if we went all the way around on that road. I'm not suggesting we do that. I think we do, we spend what we need to on the outhouses, the signage, and the dumpsters, and whatever's left of a certain capped amount, whether it be ten thousand or some other amount to do the fill.
So, the reason that I'm saying leave it open is basically just exactly what Mike just said. He could go a long ways with that. When, if this is a, an issue that is sitting on Public Works docket, and they have a, a rain day and they can't lay asphalt, they have these different things, they can still haul rock. So, rather than sit around, which they never do, they usually tear into machinery and start rebuilding it. But if they have a down day, that's something that's there, he can haul two or three loads of rock, or he gets done with something early, and rather than start a new project, they go haul three or four loads of rock. If we're getting it for free, we can continue to haul that and continue to fill as, as those times arise. If we say, do this, only spend this much money, only spend this much time, that takes it off his docket, he's checked it off his list, and I, I'm just saying, I think we can do more over time if we leave it open.
Okay. Stacy, you wanna read us the motion back, so everybody has what you got? Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right, I'm not gonna worry about the amendment, it's all in one. All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. I don't want to limit with our budget that we've had. I'm sorry. Member McConnell?
Well, if, if Mike goes crazy, we know not to trust him next time.
Okay, so what we need to do, we need to take a couple of seconds.
Member Newton, sorry.
We want our planning commission members that are here, we want them up here with us, um, so to be a part of this conversation. Um, so take just a few minutes and get our planning commission members up here, and then we'll start with Member McConnell.
Like, right here with us?
Yep, up here.
Sarah, there's some?
I'm saying a consolidator.
I just wanted to say, I need to get an extra two for my cooler.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, sir.
You wanna sit between Ron and I?
Sure.
Sorry. Not too bad. Can't, uh, can't really complain.
Chris? See, front and center. Are you the only, oh, no, we got Member Wilson too. So, we gotta sit here, wherever you like to sit. Can we sit, Member Wilson, in here between you two?
I agree, I think, I think you could do that. Here? Justin's here, so.
What? Oh, perfect. You're over here, sir.
We got a chair for you right there, too.
If we can.
We can just have a chair right there, or sit right there.
Sounds good.
You on the mic. Hey. I think I've never met you.
Hey. This is Member Valentine here.
You set a break, you know what that means? You set a break. Had I not to clean up my garbage, I would have been breaking too.
Has everything encroached on the size of the river?
Good. How about interface?
Just wondering how this is gonna work out.
All right, you ready?
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna get started here. We appreciate very much your, uh, being here tonight. Um, with that, I tell them to turn this over to Member McConnell. And let him go with our meeting.
Thank you. A couple of, so let me just start by, there is no current pending application that we're considering tonight, but out of an abundance of caution, I will go ahead and indicate some conflicts of interest, just to make sure. I have represented a number of developer entities in and around, um, Mountain Green, including in the town center area. I helped, um, some portion of Green Mountain Futures in their acquisition of the land, and, um, have represented several of the gardener entities in connection with that. So, I didn't think originally I would declare a conflict of interest because there's no pending application from any of those, and that's what, not what we're discussing tonight, but just out of an abundance of caution, I'll make that statement. I had requested a couple of months ago to have this meeting principally for informational purposes. There are a number of different stakeholders in the area who have contacted me, and I'm sure other members of the council, about their proposals for the town center area and the areas immediately around it. And you start to get, um, different impressions from different groups as to what their plan is, and you start to wonder how they will all fit together. I wasn't here when the county council approved the town center ordinance. There's members of the planning commission here that worked on that ordinance and prepared it. And so I was interested in having the staff make a presentation on what the town center ordinance was trying to accomplish, how it basically worked, and then having some of the stakeholders in that area come in and make a brief presentation as to what it was they were thinking in terms of the potential development of their land. And then to have an opportunity for us to receive some public comment. Again, I don't believe this, it's not a public hearing, it's a public comment period. We're grateful that you're here and are interested in what you have to say. So, that was kind of the basic, um, objective for tonight. It's mostly information gathering, and then I think the, the council can have a discussion about what's presented, what's said. There is no specific decision to be made tonight, so I, I know it says discussion slash decision, but again, there's no application pending. So, with that, I'll ask Lance Evans to take the staff presentation on the Town Center General Plan of Goals and Ordinances.
Good evening. My name's Lance Evans, I'm the Planning Development Services Director. For Member McConnell's point, I, I wanna talk tonight about just kind of a basic overview of how we got here, uh, to the general plan, and what the general plan goals are, and then talk about the town center ordinance. Uh, I'm gonna go relatively quick so you can get to your discussion, but I do want to cover a few things. Uh, first of all, just the timeline in general of, of this. In two thousand nine, a design assistance team, which is a, a kind of a volunteer of, of design experts, came to Mountain Green and did a plan, and we just called the DAT plan. And it outlined how, a vision for, um, how Mountain Green could develop. Don't want to get into a lot of detail of it. I mean, it's a, it's a good plan. It was not adopted as policy, but it did inform a lot of the discussion as the county went into and, and adopted the twenty-ten general plan. And so that, the twenty-ten general plan took several, all the area plans, uh, there was a lot of work that went into that. And the Mountain Green area was specifically put into the general plan. And that's gone forward in twenty, uh, well, from twenty-ten to twenty-nineteen, we had eleven future land use map amendments. Uh, in twenty-fourteen, the Mountain Green Village Development Agreement was, um, approved for, um, that area below, um, Old Highway. Let's see. So, we've gone forward, we updated the commercial use table. And it was adopted in twenty-seventeen. And twenty-seventeen also, the general future land use map was adopted, and that updated the future, the town center area of the general plan. And, um, then in twenty-eighteen, we adopted the town center ordinance. And not to lecture anybody, but just to, so everybody has a basic understanding, uh, the general plan for any jurisdiction, local government, city, county, whatever, sets out policies and goals that, um, are kind of higher level. These are, these are things we want to aspire to, sets out a vision for what the, you know, what the county in this case wants to see happen. High to that are land use areas, or land designations. And so this area, there's agricultural areas, natural resources, and recreation areas. Village low density, which sets out a, a density level and a vision for that. This particular area that we're talking about tonight was designated as town center. It was expanded in, uh, twenty-seventeen. And the town center area talks about that, um, and basically this is the vision for it, is, uh, denotes a suitable mixture of commercial, employment, and supporting residential uses in appropriate locations. And then it goes in and talks about, or mixed uses should be used horizontally and vertically. And, uh, I'll talk about mixed uses here in a second. Pro, town center projects should be designed to provide maximum compatibility with surrounding land uses. Increased aesthetic and architectural design requirements and focus on street state, streetscape creation are paramount to the development of the town center area. So, that's been in the general plan since two thousand ten. And we finally were able to adopt an ordinance where we established that. So, the general plan sets the goals and policies, then we go into and, uh, adopt the zoning ordinance for that. It actually gets into specifics. The town center area that was adopted in twenty-seventeen, uh, April twenty-seventeen, originally was just this area, uh, I want to say down here. It was expanded further to the north, um, just to orient everybody, this old highway road, Interstate eighty-four, and Trappersley Road going up to the north, obviously. So, this area in the future land use map is the town center area. And that's where, basically through the general plan, we say that's where we want to see those things happen. Then in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, we worked on and developed the actual town center ordinance. And this is where the nuts and bolts happen. We've set out a vision for a mixed-use area. Now we're, now we've actually got design standards and criteria. We talked about all, all the things that happen. And have those specific requirements. So, one thing that is very, a little confusing is what is mixed use? And so we, there's an excellent article by placemakers, uh, and it's basically talking about how, in order to develop a community, uh, options and development and diversity, a good community generally has a walkable environment, close to employment, so that people don't have to drive everywhere, uh, there's, there's the ability to, um, you know, you have, have different options for employment, for shopping, working, and, and all in a closer environment. And in order to accomplish that, planners use the term mixed use. We're trying to put the residential close to the employment. We're trying to put the employment close to the shopping, so that you don't have to get in your car every time you go somewhere. And that was the vision that was kind of laid out in the Design Assistance Team Report of clustering that area. It does not mean that it's gonna be high-rises, multi-story buildings. It could be one and two-story, it could be horizontal, and then there's an area of commercial, and then you move into an area that's maybe slightly higher density, and then transitions out. The town center general plan specifically states that it needs to blend and, and, and work with the area. And so that's what we've kind of worked on. And that's kind of what this article is discussing. It, it just kind of shows that, you know, this is, this could be a commercial area with, and, and this area's residential, or it could be all-in-one building. So, and it doesn't have to necessarily be super big or whatever, but, um, anyway. It, it can be mixed as much as is viable and, um, how it would work. The town center ordinance itself, uh, was set up, and, and the purpose statement there is to provide areas in appropriate locations where a combination of, well, that's the town center general plan, I've read that. But it, it mimics that same type of discussion, that same type of language. So, in our current zoning map, we just recently completed the rezone for the Staker Parsons property. Uh, that's here. The, uh, Mountain Green Village Development Agreement addresses this area. And then if we look at the overlay of where the town center is, from the general plan, that's the outlined area in light blue there. So, there's still some agricultural uses and zoning, there's commercial zoning. Uh, it's important to point out that in the It's important to point out that in the general plan, just because it says town center, that doesn't mean it has to be the town center zone. Those town center, that town center goal could be accomplished through, you know, maybe it's a residential zone of 8,000 square foot lots, or maybe it's a commercial zone. It's broad enough that it's, it would allow for that. And each of those rezones would have to be looked at as they came out. So the town center itself gets into the allowed uses. Obviously, it continues with agricultural uses, it allows for residential, the residential has to be part of a mixed use and it has to go through a conditional use permit to make sure we understand. You know, it allows for offices and retail and various uses. I think when the land use table was updated for the town center zone, we did a very conservative approach to it. We did not, and I'm working with the planning commission and county council, we did not put everything in there. We tried to be restrictive, we wanted some things, but it's, it's a pretty restricted list relative to other downtown areas. We also put in design standards. So there's specific design standards for non-residential uses, for mixed uses, streetscape, multifamily, there's connectivity standards, so as a subdivision is designed, we're minimizing block lengths, we get into all kinds of interesting details there. We want this type of, these are all pretty good examples of building articulation, different elevations, and, you know, little things like these, this building here has glass, so that it's a more open feel for the commercial areas below, but it could have residential unit above. It shows building articulation, it breaks everything up. Those, the ordinance goes into detail on those, what is required for those elevations, the commercial and residential, mixed multifamily. Multifamily design standards go into similar type thing. I think one element is that we want to see if this is actually the building around the outside with parking on the inside. And that allows it to be a more pedestrian-friendly feel along the fronts of buildings in these different examples. And then a couple more just significant things that are important to note, is that we have design standards for actual subdivisions. And it's a sort of a complex formula, but it's trying to get at, we don't want to have an isolated area where you have to get in your car and go everywhere. Here's some examples of, you know, the cars can drive here, but the pedestrians have shortcuts to get to other places. And that incentivizes the opportunities for walking or going to different locations. And it sets, and then the other big item we threw in was that we want to make sure there's an open space corridor for future trails. So as development comes in, in these general areas, we want to see that there's a pedestrian and an open space corridor, not just all development. So, that's a quick overview, there is a lot in that ordinance, but those are the standards we've set up. An important thing I haven't mentioned yet is that as a development comes in in the town center, it would have to, the application would be submitted with elevations and design, landscaping, and it would all be codified with the development agreement, so that the county would have assurances to make sure that we can get into a much higher level of detail than a standard zoning ordinance. Right now, on a commercial highway piece of property, for example, we have, the controls we have are use, setbacks, and height. That's it. This goes into a whole nother level of elevations, landscaping, materials, building materials, that type of thing. So it's a significant step up for anybody who wants to do development in the town center zone. Does that kind of cover what, what else can I tell you?
Are there any required percentages that are required, required by the zone in terms of the mix between commercial and residential uses? I didn't see any.
No, that is not in there. We didn't, we didn't want to get into and make a guess at something that we didn't know. The, the economy and the market viability of commercial versus, I mean, and residential need to be considered. So, I, my hope is that when someone comes in and actually does a development in the town center, that they show us, well, here's, here's our economic analysis and why we would, why we're proposing what we're proposing. Because, I mean, everybody, not everybody, some, some places like to see a lot of commercial, oh, it's higher tax rate, but if it's not viable commercial, then it becomes challenging.
Okay, thank you. So, you made arrangements with a couple of different of the stakeholders to make some brief presentations here, just one's going to do it?
Just one's coming.
Okay. If you'll introduce them, have them.
Mr. Jeremy, let me see, yeah, you, I'll say it wrong every time. Jeremy is here, and he's going to talk about his development. We put up feelers for people who were developing in the area and asked them to present if they wouldn't mind giving us an idea of what they were thinking and why they were thinking what they're thinking, just to start the discussion, and so we can discuss what's happening and hopefully do something that works for everybody.
Hello, members, it's great to be with you today. My name's Jeremy Yagin, a resident of Mountain Green as of nine months ago. And I'm new to development, and I've learned very quickly that that's sometimes a polarizing word in this county. And in fact, when we were first moving in, I was driving down Old Highway Road and I saw a man in need of some help, he was putting up a pergola, I pulled over and helped him for a few minutes. And he said, well, what are you doing here? And I said, well, I think I'm going to do some development. And he paused, looked me in the eye and said, son, there's three things we don't talk about in Morgan County: fences, water, and developers. So, I quickly caught on. As a resident though of Morgan County, I feel drawn to develop appropriately. Utah has a great challenge. We're supposed to double in population in the next 30 years, and if you climb to the top of Mount Ogden and look over there and see what space is left, Davis County is that narrow neck of land leading northward. I-89 will be connected in the next few years, leading to our Great Canyon, and I-15 coming together. And Salt Lake County has 32,000 acres remaining, and that's all spoken for already. People will come to Morgan County, people will come to Box Elder County, and Summit County in droves over the next 20 years. So I commend the commission for thinking ahead about how we can plan accordingly to make our community a sweet community, one that we can all be proud of. And it requires listening to everyone, listening to all those who have a voice and need to be heard, those who have been here for many years, and those of us who just arrived. I'll go back to one of Lance's, Lance's, this is a separate deck, so that's okay. Lance showed where we're located, we could be considered Morgan Passageway. So the first piece of land, as you come and enter the Mountain Green area, to the left of I-84, it's sandwiched right in between I-84 and Old Highway Road. And so Val Paul and I, who's in the back, have joined together, and we have 40 acres of joint development land we are going to do together. And we want to do it right, and we've talked to the neighbors, and we want to make sure that we're, that we're listening to all the neighbors as well. You all know what's happening. I think it's this week, Wasatch Peaks will present a preliminary application. Davey Ratsford is my neighbor, he's up in Snow Basin. Both have aspirations to develop, so both sides of I-84 will develop over the next 10 years significantly. If we don't plan now for what that's going to look like, we could have a fractured, disjointed community, rather than one that is put together in a holistic fashion, as Lance already outlined. And Davey's job is to develop. Davey's job is to grow the number of skiers on that mountain, and that will happen. All the fiscal economic reports suggest that a new interchange will come, we don't know the timing of that, but as I'm speaking with UDOT and talking with people down in Salt Lake City, they would like to see that interchange sooner rather than later. That interchange will provide an opportunity for our community to have a new road, because there are millions of dollars passing by every weekend during the wintertime. And that town center area will be able to capture so much of that commercial opportunity with an interchange there as well. The income trends in our county are flowing, just like they are through all of Utah. Utah's economic pace is surpassing almost every other state. Morgan County surpasses Salt Lake County in terms of income growth and income opportunity, which is an indicator of what's going to happen here in the future as well. We know what the housing trends look like as well. 2010, there were 3,500 homes in this county, by July, excuse me, by July 2017, there were 3,500 homes, and another 4,000 homes that are under master development agreements in this county. This is our land, or the Morgan County Passageway, it's zoned for light commercial and both sides, light manufacturing. We want to be able to be a link, because we're just west of Kent Smith Park, to the recreation that's happening at Kent Smith, and be a link. A bridge over Gordon Creek or two would be appropriate to a field in our area and to a recreation center that I'll talk about in just a few minutes. There'll also be some light manufacturing along the I-84 piece, providing opportunity for companies to come in and also to kind of shield off the 84 and provide some additional tax revenue there. Green Mountain Futures is locally owned and operated by me and a Val, and that's the name of our LLC, and we want to ensure that we're doing this the right way. We believe that all the discussions that are ongoing now are healthy discussions, on all sides of the discussion, we welcome all feedback, to make sure that we're doing this the right way. Morgan County is appealing. It's appealing because of what we just talked about with the river coming through it, with the fisherman, with all the mountaineering, with all the hiking, the biking, and everything else. In fact, my family and I came here because we could have chosen everywhere in Utah, but we chose here because of all of you, great people that live here, that we had met in our three years serving, because of the dark skies, the green hills, the beautiful scenery, that's why, and then the affordability. And that can be either a beautiful combination, or can be a hard combination for people. But because I chose to move here, I know others will choose to come as well. And that's my family, who now live here, and they love living in Mountain Green, with all of you. So what is planned initially? We have commitments from four companies. The first is an armored car company that's been in Ogden for many years, they employ 25 people, they have a 20,000 square foot facility, they armor cars and ship them out all over the world. They want to be here in Morgan County, because of what I've just described. We also have a commitment from Volte Motor Conversions, which takes those armored cars, outfits them, and then makes them beautiful for other people. A veterinary clinic is also committed to come here on a 1.5 acres. And then we also have a privately held recreation center, the owners are here today, who would like to build a pool for Morgan County residents, so that they don't have to go up to Colville or other places. Along with the pools, there'd be other facilities involved there. You can see a basketball court, potentially an indoor soccer field, climbing walls, and that's just a little rendering of what things would look like. The Mountain Modern, that it will be consistent, and what our goal is to be consistent with what the town center consistency is. That we're not required with the same ordinance, we want to make a link, both with trails that go to Kent Smith, behind the storage, over to the town center, so that we have one continuous flow in the Mountain Green Center. And we want to be a part of that and contribute to that. We have also been in touch with other companies who have high interest because of the growth in Morgan County. If you go to the governor's economic, Office of Economic Development, they highlight Morgan County, Box Elder County. I was in New York City for a business trip, and they handed me a sheet, a big bank in New York City, and said, we'd like to invest in these counties. Morgan County was at the top of the list. Why? Because there are incentives for the banks, there are incentives by the USDA and other federal entities to invest in rural communities like ours. Because of those investments, because of those incentives, is why our community is going to grow. So I hope we can do it the right way. This is a picture of Armory Max that was in Centerville, the very building will be constructed on our land, so it looks and feels like a nice building, not like a manufacturing building. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the county and the members.
So your, your property is actually outside of the town center?
It is, it's not enclosed in the town center the way Lance just described it, but we'd sure like to link to that in any way to make it consistent.
Any other questions, Jeremy?
Planning Commission? That's why you guys are here too?
All right, I guess there's an opportunity for public comment, since all of you spoke earlier, that we don't need to, you know, go ahead, I guess one at a time, and try to keep your comments short, and like I said, there's no pending application now. And while we may, you may think we need everything to be repeated, we probably don't need the same comment 12 times from 12 individuals, but.
Just one second, so Sarah's our timer, we have a timer, we've got three minutes, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Hello, my name is Carrie Gordon. I am also a community member of, and also within nine months have moved to Morgan. I'm a mother of six and a business owner, the business owner that Jeremy just spoke of. This past fall, my son Ben swam at the Morgan High School swim team, and they had to travel on bus by at seven, they're leaving at seven up the canyon to North Summit, returning to the high school about 10 o'clock each night. So, as a business owner of the swim school, I want to help these swimmers have a second opportunity to wear to practice. I own and have operated this swim school for 34 years, the last 30 with my husband Scott. If given the opportunity, we would like to build a facility with a pool and other sports related amenities, like Jeremy showed you, within the Green Mountain Development. I feel it will benefit the community and the youth of the area. This facility will provide a place for them to come with their families, to improve their skills in any sports activities, and also anticipate hosting leagues or local competitions. It will also create jobs. We currently employ 58 people year-round at our Seattle location, with another 18 to 20 coming on for the summer, mid-June for the summer staffing. This brings a total of 78 people that we will employ. We look to employ something like that within the Morgan County as well. My husband and I look forward, along with our family, to working with you to build this within the Morgan County vision, and to provide this to the people of Morgan County. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Davey Ratsford, I'm the, well, I live in Mountain Green, and that's probably the most informed, and I'm also the general manager and vice president of Snow Basin, I was the guy with the beard on that photo, but Jeremy, thanks for reminding me that, shed my beard. I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. One, I wanted to thank everybody for the support of the bus, those that did support the bus that came in for the winter season. That was, the utilization of that increased a thousandfold, thousand percent this winter. This is the greatest winter in our history at Snow Basin, we're celebrating our 80th anniversary next season. If you saw the report that came out from Ski Utah today, it was the biggest winter in history, 5.1 million skier visits. Of the skier visits that were in the state of Utah, we have the highest percentage of growth out of every skier's own. Couple of quick things you should be aware, we have a lot of skiers, we have a lot of people that come up and use it, but there isn't a higher percentage of utilization than in Morgan County. Morgan County's residents equate to 10% of all of our season, 10% of everyone that lives in Morgan County is a season pass holder. So Morgan County is a agricultural area, it's a great area for people to live and recreate, but it's also a skate community. And I know that's hard sometimes, but the data matters, 10% of you on the season pass at Snow Basin, that's a higher percentage than Weber County by a long shot, a higher percentage than Davis County by a long shot, and they come and go, they come all the time to the resort, we love it. And I think we love having that in the backyard. The reason I share that with you is I am concerned that the, the way our tax structure is in this county... is in this county is so heavily weighted on just residential, that I worry about the history of that. If you look across this country in communities like ours, what happens when the balance isn't struck? What happens when the business side is not the same as the residential side? And candidly, we have that. We just talked about roads that can't get repaired. We debated for an hour. It's a great discussion on porta-potties, for sure. But that should have been a simple, quick decision, right? But it's not, because money's hard to come by, and it really shouldn't be. If you do it right, if you do it with the thought process that it's happening anyway, but let's manage it appropriately, that's the right way to go about it. Don't want to change what we got. I did the same thing. I moved here with my family because I wanted to be what it is for all of us. But we are a ski community. We are an agricultural community. We're a community-based, with all sorts of different mindsets, people that love this stuff and are here to just reject it wholeheartedly, right? And that's okay. We just have to find some sort of common ground and realize that data, fact gathering, information is the right good way forward. We are a ski community. And we're an agricultural community. We can do all things. We just balance that and have good communication. Thank you. Time's up.
Thanks, Dave.
My name's Anita Brooks, and I live in the Highlands. And I built my house in nineteen ninety-one because this was such a beautiful place and I could be outdoors, a beautiful rural area. I like to talk about population density versus quality of life. I've lived all over the world, and on both coasts, north and south, and in the center of the country. And as sure as the sun rises in the east and sets in the west, this is what I know for sure. You have more people, you have more cars, you have more traffic, and you will have more crime. Fourteen years in Los Angeles taught me about that. I would argue against multi-unus, multi-story buildings and increasing the population density. And of course, in the end, we will all have higher taxes. I'm retired military and on social security, though that tells you where I am. I would like to see some restrictions on this population density development plan. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm Dave Price. I live over in Mountain Green. Want to start out by saying, I grew up in South Weber, just down the canyon. I spent most of my life there, and I remember vividly coming up here in two thousand and seven and just coming up and sitting on the back of my car to see the stars that you guys have up here. And that's driven me to eventually move up here, and it's, it's a concern that I have and a passion that I want to fight for to preserve. And I just want to, well, my comments are related to preserving the night sky through some sort of a, an ordinance or, or something like that. The Reese, the Morgan County Resource Management Plan adopted in two thousand and seventeen states, it's one line on page forty, "Identify and avoid the impacts of light pollution to recreation, tourism, the economy, and quality of life." Now, I'm, I'm very new to this, and I don't know a whole lot about these ordinances, and I don't want to step on any toes. I, I understand, I'm not necessarily against growth. I just want to try and get something in place that will help preserve the night sky. It's okay that people have lights, they have beautiful houses with all their accent lightings, but there's some CCRs and covenants and HAs that kind of put a cap on those, and I think it's working to some extent. But I think we can go one step further, just to ensure that through some sort of an ordinance. So, well, I contacted the county, and it sounds like there isn't necessarily anything set in stone at this point, but it's kind of a loose understanding, and so I'm just looking to forward that a little bit more. Two things real quick. I don't know if this is allowed, but if I raise a hands, you're concerned citizens, how many are concerned with preserving the night sky?
Yes.
I just want, pretty going forward to see if that would motivate me to keep pressing a little bit. But again, I welcome any guidance from you. I'll, I'll contact you on, on the side. Also, in the community, if you have any resources or information, I'm working with the Dark Sky Chapter, International Dark Sky Association Chapter in Weber County and Ogden, and they have a lot of good resources. And just would request that potential contractors for developing city centers, that they consider those types of things. I know they live up here, and I appreciate that, that they appreciate the, the night sky we have. So I just set up an email account, morganightsky@gmail.com. So if I need you, one second, shoot me an email. I appreciate it. I'll go from there.
Thanks, Dave.
My name is Erica Beckstrom. I live in Mountain Green. And first of all, I want to thank the council for letting us have a developer come in and actually show us what he plans to do. I hope we have more meetings like that, because I think most of us really appreciate that, to know what is going to be coming into our community and, and have a voice on that. With that, I want to voice my support for the Green Mountain Futures LLC development. I'm not necessarily pro-growth, but I do see this development as it will support the need for services and infrastructure to support the growth we've already approved. So growth is already coming, and I feel like it's, it's a great way to support the growth that's already been approved. I also believe that Morgan County is very fortunate to have the Gordons choose Morgan County out of all counties in Utah that they were looking at to build a privately owned rec center and pool. I, I worked last year trying to get a pool in Morgan. We were trying to get land donated by the school district, and it just, we were just hitting so many walls, and then in walks the Gordons, and they have this idea to do this rec center and this privately funded pool, which I believe most of you would agree, if Morgan County is to have that type of facility, this is the best-case scenario and really the only way Morgan County is ever going to have one. I mean, with as much work as I put into last year, I realize that, we just don't have the money, and I feel like we're very, very fortunate to have this opportunity. And so with that said, I hope that this process becomes sooner than later, because it really is needed. My daughter's on the swim team, and like other swimmers that were here, we lost our kids from six to ten PM every single night, every, every day of the week, from October to February, because they had to drive that far. And so I know that it's very welcomed, and, and I hope that people will see that way, because it is the best-case scenario.
Thanks, Erica.
Good evening. My name's Don Paul, and I live in Mountain Green. Just, so if we just quaid any confusion, I'm a P.A. developed, a little different than many of the Pauls who live there. I've lived there for fifteen years, actually sixteen years now. I was a member of the DAT that we talked about earlier, DAT Committee, and when we were talking about a much smaller thing that we're talking about today. And I guess I, I wanted to comment in a couple ways that, that may be a little bit different. Mountain Green sits on the north after Morgan County, and it's a different environment there, I've learned. I moved there basically because of the beauty that surrounds us, that literally that was what I did. I built a house with a window. I, I built a house around a window, is literally what I did. And in fact, that window will have the view of a swimming pool and whatever else, because I sit right above the fields that we're talking about earlier today. I don't know if that bothers me as much as the idea that in Morgan County, and particularly in Mountain Green, we have two sets of people that are associated with employment. We have agriculture, and we have people that are residents here, but essentially work out of the county. I would suspect that maybe ninety percent or greater are people that live in, that live in Mountain Green are going down the canyon or someplace to work. And so they're not here for someplace necessarily to develop a, a commercial interest. Those people that I'm, that I'm talking about that are residents are here because of the beauty they see, the opportunities they have, to have a community that's away from the hustle and bustle of what we see in the Wasatch Front. That's why we're here. I don't, I, I would suspect that even those people that lived here, that are not agrarian in their perspective, have moved here, even that built a home maybe forty or fifty years ago, are still people that work downtown. So that's the place where we have an opportunity for big box stores. That's the place where we have, go to a movie, I'm within fifteen minutes of that. I would just assume that stay down there, if we do decide to do a community center, I hope that it'll be based around that environment that I described. I, I can't believe that people would want to see a large-scale commercial move into Mountain Green. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Don.
I'm Bill Weaver, also from Mountain Green. I have the privilege to live on the worst road in Morgan, Utah.
Yes.
I bear with, second witness what Don just said. He's absolutely right. Mountain Green is a veteran community, and we do go down there three or four times a week, and it doesn't bother us a bit. We don't need all that stuff in Mountain Green. Rez Don Booker today, though, and I want to reinforce that DAT. You've, you've just barely pervert it, and I understand that. When that first came on, I was on the planning commission, and that DAT, when they were, when they was putting that together, they got a committee of more, of Mountain Green residents, and they, they submitted to that, that, that group just what they wanted to see. And above all, it was rural attitude. They wanted to have a rural community. Later on, I was assigned the chair of committee of fourteen Mountain Green residents, very highly qualified people, to review that DAT and see if we would accept it or not. Of the fourteen, it was Don Paul, matter of fact, was, was one of those very capable people. We reviewed that plan and found it a very good plan. We accepted almost all of it. We added to it, matter of fact, some of the growth that you showed in your town center, we added to that DAT also. We liked it, but we liked everything in that except for the density around it. So we did not accept that plan, and we made it non-binding because of the density around the, around that community. Everything else we liked. So I would encourage you that putting this town center together, dust that DAT off again and take a look at it. Would you look at the recommends, recommends that we made of that? I think it was, it was well thought up. We spent, I don't know how many meetings, twelve, fourteen meetings, we viewed that, and it was a good product, but we, it was just the density, and now we're faced with that again. I want to make one comment about the, the zoning and, right on the floor of Mountain Green for, for light manufacturing. I love Hal Paul. He's a good man as I've ever met in my life. He's a partnership for that. But I believe that type of, of thing should be in our industrial park. We got an industrial park by that airport. It's made for that sort of thing. Why don't we use that and rezone that for commercial, for, for housing and the regular thing? So anyway, I'll just leave with you that thought, that we do like the rural community of Mountain Green. We'd like to keep it. We're losing it at all time, we know, and we don't need all that building and all this, all the facilities around that, so we could do our shopping easier. We don't mind driving fifty miles. Almost all of us came to Mountain Green from down below in the first place. Almost fifty-five years ago, I did that. I still go to Argus for my, for my shopping, my doctor's appointments, things like that. So we don't need all that growth up here, and I know that we're going to do it anyway. I, I understand that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill.
Andrea Franklin from Mountain Green, thank you for your service. I just wanted to, to say a comment. You guys know that I ran for office, and by the way, Member McConnell, I don't envy that you're there and I'm here at all. But I did want to bring up a point. As I, as I had ran for office, I knocked on almost two hundred doors in Enterprise, Peterson, and Mountain Green. And the number one concern of the voters that they had, and I was very strategic on who I knocked with, the people that cared most about the community by showing that they voted the most consistently over the last five years. So those were the people that I was speaking with, and their number one concern was very consistent in the economic viability of Morgan County and seeing the residential growth that is coming and it not being balanced by commercial growth. So I think there's a way to bring in commercial growth that will help Morgan County's tax base and still be consistent with a rural feel. I mean, you guys have a really tough job with that, because everyone loves the rural feel of Morgan County, but I feel like we can still keep it a rural, a rural feel and get the commercial that we need to keep Morgan County economically viable place to live for the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
Our family has been here for, for many generations. Our property is directly west of the proposed development that's been proposed tonight. We've been in contact with Mr. Paul and Mr. Yagi, and we appreciate many of their concerns, and their open and their willingness to, to discuss things with us. We appreciate that very much. I've got twelve bullet points I was going to mention, but I'm not going to, for the sake of time. We wouldn't be able to, to discuss them with, with the, the time that's needed. I just want you to know, and I, I look over this group, and there's, I, I can't, you know, maybe, maybe a couple of you have been able to experience some of the things that we've experienced during, during our lifetime as far as drainage goes. Twelve point, twelve major bullet points that need to be discussed. We're not going to do it tonight, but all our family asks is we have an opportunity to let you guys know of these, these drainage issues. And, you know, if, if it's a possibility that some of us, us people that have been here for a while and seen some things, you know, maybe, maybe to be just a little bit open-minded, you know, as to some of the solutions, you know, that, that we've, we've got, and to hear some of the concerns. These are great developments, you know, but there's, there's no way that, that they should impact people that have been here for generations. You know, if people had been painted a bunch or something like that, I, I could see it, you know, but all, all we wanted to do is live our lives in, in our, in a rural, beautiful community that I can see that many, many people love. And so please give us the opportunity to, you know, to, to voice these, the, the, these issues on, on specifically drainage. It's very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I think our typical practice isn't to applaud one way or the other, so, thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Charles Pig, and I live in Rollins Ranch, adjacent to the new town center zone, and I'm very interested in seeing it get planned right and fit into the character of our community. I'm also professional, so I have a couple of comments about how you start on something like this. And we last saw the Staker Parsons group come in, and they're just north of their old road, at Trappers Loop, and they're starting and they're thinking. And the land south of their old road, in Trappers Loop, is so large that there needs to be a kind of a planning effort to try to be a kind of a planning effort to try to knit together the different landowners so that they're not just separate pieces, but they work together. Because that's what a village is about. A suburb is always things that are separated and you have to drive to them. A village means you have a village of roads. And Lance showed that on his presentation. And also another comment is that to get the commercial, you need more residential. So let's not be scared of the denser type of residential townhomes and or monthly condominiums that may be mixed use because that's the way the commercial will be supported and those two have to work together. But in terms of how we start it, we should probably think through where it starts first, which is probably the St. Peter Parsons, Trappers Loop, Old Road intersection. And how do we keep that intersection not a huge traffic zone? By adding other roads to take people around it and become part of that village so we separate the traffic. The other point is that the UTA works really well to go up to Snow Basin. And if we have the UTA circulating through this and they're going up to Snow Basin, that people could park somewhere in here, take the bus up to Snow Basin and come back and serve the users in that community. And that would be very smart to have transportation be part of the planning so that not everybody's in their car. And I think for all of us, you know, if we have a chance to not do this big, we should do it small so that it's just a little bit enough to have the services, but it doesn't become a big suburb in the free box. That's my thoughts. And I look forward to you doing this again. Thank you for having us on.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. John Lanifat again. I've been in Mountain Green for quite a few years. I'm new, fairly new, forty years. But I have noticed that there are segments in the community, okay, obviously. There are people who moved there seven months ago and there are the people who've lived there forever. Their ideas do not merge. There's some very different and divergent thoughts as to where the future lies with Mountain Green. There are some over here who would not like anything to happen, no development. Fact is, they'd like all those people who moved here seven months ago to leave. That's just reality. That's where their mindset is. Then there are the other people, the new people who moved there, new residents, who by the way are in the majority now. So the pendulum has now swung to their side and they're good, positive role models in our community. But those people don't necessarily want to drive all the way into Leighton and face that morass of traffic and congestion down there. They would rather have basic services right where they live. That's an understandable position. There are others, as I said, on the other side who would like very much not to have anything developed there. But the problem is, is that, and it comes right back to money, there's no tax base in the area. And when you have five thousand new homes that are being proposed to be built there, and that will happen undoubtedly, you build them, they will come, that's simply not going to sustain the basic services we need. My road won't get fixed because we don't have the tax revenue coming in to take care of all of these infrastructure needs. You know, I'm a little concerned about the old highway. Quite frankly, it's being impacted significantly now. What is going to happen when you have five thousand new homes built in there? That road is going to be a serious problem as far as the transportation load for the community and for the members there. There are some problems that the council is going to have to work on, there's no doubt about it. But for the most part, somehow, these various contingencies have got to come together and come into some sort of a reasonable combination for the new residents that are there and that will still continue to come. And those of us who've been there for thirty or forty years have to simply recognize reality. It simply happened. We didn't want it to happen necessarily, but it happened. And so now we have to deal with where do we go from here? That's my view of it.
Thank you, John.
I'm Carol Rouse and I'm from Mountain Green. Most of you know me and you've heard from me several times, but I would just like to reinforce a couple of things tonight. I can't speak for the majority of the people and neither can you. We don't know. But I believe that all of the things that we've talked about, about the skies and the... I don't think the majority of the people in Mountain Green want to see the density, the that. That program was awesome. But the mass developments and those kind of things to make Mountain Green into Park City, I don't think that's what we want. And I think it's your job to consider the people. When we were younger, we had Como Springs for a swimming pool and the river. And I think a swimming pool would be awesome for the youth. I don't know how all of that fits together, but I definitely think that there are parts of all of this that are good. And I have lived in Mountain Green for quite a while and I can honestly tell you that ninety-five percent of the people that I've met that have come here, I love. And so it's not a bad thing. It's just like some of the people have mentioned, the density and the mass development are going to bring in things that are going to take away from what we have now. Well, thank you for listening.
Thanks, Carol.
My name is Mark Nelson. Forty years ago, first I want to say to all the people that moved in here in the last nine months, ten months, eleven months, two years, five years, ten years, welcome. Because forty years ago, somebody had to develop some ground and somebody had to buy it. And those people who've been here forty and fifty years bought those properties. So we need to be aware that if you look at the state of Utah as a whole, you take the last four years along the Wasatch Front, you take the size of Bountiful, and you've got that many people move into the state of Utah every year for the last four years. Those people are going somewhere. I drove out to Harriman and Saratoga Springs and all in that area and I was blown away at what's out there and how it's built up. People are catching on to Morgan County. They know it's here. They are coming. And you're not going to stop that as much as we'd all like to be able to stop certain things. So you have to do it smart. You have to, it's going to build, it's going to happen, you've already seen it. The Wilkinson family sold their place, the Smith family sold theirs. It's going to happen. We need to make sure that we do it so it's pretty, it's nice, and it's a welcoming place. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you for hearing all of our comments. My name is Louise Early and I moved here almost a year ago. Moved away from Utah about thirty years ago, served my country, married a guy, he retired from the Air Force last year and we moved back here. And I won't repeat your comments, but you're absolutely right. Development's coming. I came back and we moved up here because it's absolutely beautiful. And I have four children and over the years, as we would come back to visit family here, I've had the opportunity to drive through Colorado, all parts of Utah. And you can see where planned development occurred, where people said, no, we want to keep our rural town, let's plan it right. And they're beautiful. And I'll tell you, you've seen places, many outside of military bases, where the base went in and there was no planning. The zoning's horrible. And it is uncomfortable to be there. It takes thought and planning, it takes purpose to do it right. We can build in ordinances for night skies. We can build in places where our youth will have summer jobs. That's a big deal. We have a lot of kids and they all want cars and they all want, because they have to leave the county. Let's build it with purpose where we can provide our children with places of employment where we don't have to spend the gas to go get a gallon of milk. It takes planning and purpose. And we did, we all moved up here for a reason. We love the rural community. Let's keep that feel. I love the plan that Lance presented. The architectural design is there, let's follow through with that. So thank you for hearing all our comments and let's do it right. Let's make Morgan beautiful because it's coming no matter what, just like the inversion. You can see it coming up the canyon a little bit. It's there. Let's keep the monster a day and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm very good at standing here and talking, but as I stand here tonight, I think we're all stewards of the land. We all go to, I see most people in religion. You know, and I look at things different. I'm an American citizen. So when I bought Austin Winchester's property, I gave American currency for it. So I believe I bought his rights to that property. But what I don't, that I wanted to say, that I kind of, I've raised hay on that ground and farmed that ground that we're on for since about nineteen eighty-six. So I hope that our family farm would never get sold. But to me, when I stand here and I hear people say whether they live on a half acre, they live on five acres, there was no turn-on when I was on my horse to swap and hay to see a half acre home setting up on those two.
Wayne, we need you to talk to us, not to them.
In a cowboy's mind and the ranchers and the farmers that live in this valley, they ain't thrilled with any of these homes to be here. If they had, it'd be like Cokeville, Wyoming. There wouldn't be half acre lots and you wouldn't be driving downtown because you wouldn't be, there would be no lots of a half acre people to live here if it was all about cattle. How many people in here cut hay or have cattle?
Wayne.
So what's your view?
Wayne.
Yeah.
This was...
I'm sorry, but...
You're okay.
So I believe that the Lord intended this for all of us. And for, you know, I'd rather see a thousand acres and I'd rather have six thousand acres cows than have a neighbor. That's true. Cattle are a lot better neighbors, but... What makes it so that one person lives on a half acre, maybe that's all right, nobody else can come? That's hogwash and mischief. That's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Wayne. Anyone else?
You've discussed hay on my farm. You like to watch me work.
I have been an insignificant citizen of Morgan County for over thirty years and I've always wanted to just be a peacemaker, to just let people know that they're cared about. I thank my heavenly Father every day for the privilege of living in this beautiful area surrounded by wonderful people. And we are. And it would be such a blessing if all these wonderful people could give it the same mindset. Now, it was a surprise to us when we moved to Mountain Green that over ninety percent of this county is private. Because of that, we can't roam as freely as a lot of us would like to, even though when we were raising our children here, they got to roam a lot more than children do now here. And it was a great time. It's been interesting to watch the growth. Those of us who have been here twenty-five or more years would like to go back twenty-five years and say, this is good. This is good, let's keep it this way. But we cannot. It has changed ever since about twenty-five years ago. It's grown. It is private land. I was on the DAT committee and it was an interesting time. It was a great experience. We had architects from the Frank Lloyd School of Right, Architect's School come to help us with that. We had sustainability experts from all over the country. It was a great committee to be on and to learn about our county. The thing is, we are having growth. It is inevitable. We all realize that. As I hear what's coming, what people are trying to do, you just can't go back to the true rural atmosphere. It's already gone. I believe our temperatures are warming because more traffic is coming into our county. The inversion is coming up. We can't go back and it's all private land. We can't change that and say, I'm sorry, you can't build on your private land because we don't want you to. We just can't do that. It's not the law. It's not the way our country runs. By the way, I appreciate all of those of you who have served our country and for the reason we enjoy the freedoms we do. I truly appreciate you. I appreciate the concept of the community swimming pool activity center so that the youth don't have to travel away from the county. We want them to be safe. We're having more accidents than we've ever had before. The canyon is busier than it ever was before. Is my time up? Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Steve Bodum and I live in Mountain Green. And thanks for the time. I picked a really bad time because everybody's impatient and want to go home. I'll try and keep it fairly quick. I didn't have prepared comments, so again, keep it fairly short. I appreciate Carol Rouse and all the people who've been here a long time. They give us a lot of depth and background. I'm very new. I've been here a couple of years and I think that also brings something valuable, a little bit of breadth, because living all over the world, different countries and all parts of the United States, I've seen a lot of different things. And I want to emphasize, it's just like people who live in the United States don't necessarily know what they have. I don't know if everybody here knows what they have. If you can find me another county that's fifteen minutes away from a city the size of Ogden, forty minutes away from the major international airport, and has not a single stoplight in the entire county, let me know about that. I'd like to move there. That's why I came here. My job, I could pick from about eight cities. I picked Salt Lake City. I have no ties here. I'm from Atlanta. I have no ties here. I came here because of Morgan County. This is, I looked it up. This was where I wanted to be because of those reasons. So I just want to first emphasize, I don't know if you know what you have, and until you know what you have, you're not going to fight hard to protect what you have. Most of us moved here not for what it could be, but for what it is. And that describes me. I moved here because I liked what it was and not with some vision for what it might be in the future. So the reason why I was compelled to get out of my comfy chair in the back row there is because I want to talk about the idea of inevitability of growth. There is some truth to that because when we've made agreements with people and we've rezoned land, they can build there. So we've already got double of our population from what I heard recently. That's got to come. I get that. But I want to fight the idea of growth is inevitable. We can say that forever. We can always just keep saying, well, as long as there's demand, then we have to grow. That's not really true unless I completely misunderstand. That's why we have commissions, planning commissions. That's why we have councils. That's why we vote. We get to decide that. It's not inevitable. We get to decide where we draw the line. We can decide how much rural space we want to protect and how much we want to rezone. Property owners have rights to their property to a certain degree, but nowhere in our founding documents does it say that you can rezone. I can't go and put a fifteen-story high-rise on my land just because I want to. I'm restricted by zoning. And we control as a community how we want to zone our land and how we want to use it. So to say that it's inevitable and the property owners can do whatever they want to, well, they can do a lot of things. They can sell their land as it's currently zoned. They can petition for rezoning. Maybe they'll get rezoned maybe they want, but that's the issue at hand. Let's not give away the fight before we have it. That's why we have these commissions. So we get to decide that. So anytime you hear somebody saying, this is inevitable and people can do what they want with their land, they're just trying to end run that argument and assume the point that's being debated before it's even had a chance to be debated. And I just wanted to stand up and say with as much politeness as I can, let's not just give it away. Let's have that talk and let's use our commissions for what to do. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else would like to speak? Thank you for your comments. We appreciate hearing your different perspectives. So I guess that brings us to an opportunity for the council and the planning commission members to discuss their thoughts.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
What sort of things do we as the...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
What sort of, what sort of things, um, do we as the planning commission and, and you as the council, what sort of things do we need to get together on, um, to make sure, going off that last comment was kind of the exclamation point, to, to make sure that we're, we're planning this effectively? You know, I could kinda regurgitate some of the comments we had tonight, but the, but the idea is, is there was a general plan. We spent a lot of time. There was, there was a DAT that was never codified into, into ordinance or law. We spent two years as a planning commission, nearly, looking at the details of the DAT, trying to bring that into an ordinance. Prior to that, as Lance told us, reminded us, we spent a couple of years updating the general plan to kinda cast those broad strokes for the brown area, which is, which is the, the town center. Only a very small percentage of that which we can control, which is, we need to get that word out. So we wrote the ordinance. We got the broad strokes. Um, there's, there's incredible details in the standards. We talked about the math, about the turnarounds and, um, we just spent nearly two years in, in doing that. So I think we've, we've got a, a good set of tools to do, um, or to, to apply to whatever applications come forth. I, I think those tools are there. One of the things that I hear from the public is that they, I don't think everybody knows. There's a lot of new people here that have come in, in the past nine months, maybe two years. We've been at this for, this is the fifth year that I've been involved with this. So, um, maybe one of the things we needed to do is, is just spend more time saying, reassuring people that, hey, we, we've had a lot of competent discussions and getting to where we're gonna go to. Because there are, and there are a lot more things we need to talk about. Night Sky, um, obviously is, is a good, a big takeaway from tonight. But I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is what do we need to do to work together to really get an idea of what we want this to look like? I really, I, I wish we had developers here that were talking more about that fifty-two acre parcel that just got rezoned. Really, cause, cause that's really what we're planning on talking about. The, the ones that we did have discussion about were, they've been zoned that way for, gosh, how long? Ten years at least, the commercial highway at least.
So I agree with you. That would've been nice. Lance, do you know anything about what they're proposing? Is that principally a residential development? Have they shared anything with you?
They told me that they're working on several scenarios. They're working with the architectural planning firm in Salt Lake to, to do that. They're sorry they couldn't make it tonight to CW land. But they are, they are flushing out and listening to this conversation, so.
Alls I heard them say was that they were community builders and they stayed invested in their community. So that's really the only thing I know about what they do and that they've developed in the southern part of the state and some up here in the Wasatch Front. I think kind of responding to your question, I mean, for, for me, again, this was mostly informational. I'm interested in what the different perspectives are. I, I, I'll, I'll speak to inevitability of growth. The constitutional principles are reversed. The, the, the constitution provides for the protection of land and land rights. Subsequently, there was, um, a movement in the United States to allow jurisdictions for purposes of public health, safety and welfare to, to regulate land uses. And I think that's a good thing. And I think we need to plan intelligently and purposefully with respect to this area. I think that, um, from my perspective, in terms of Morgan County, this town center is the best area for more concentrated growth than anywhere else in the county. And that's driven from, um, my view of the fact that if UDOT puts in that interchange, if there are a lot of extra residents that live in this area and many of them will work down the, the canyon, that they leave in the morning and they head off of that accessway and down the interstate and it puts less demand on the road. So I, from my perspective, if we're gonna concentrate growth in an area, this is the best area to do it. It also seems consistent with the general plan and it seems consistent with, you know, the recent zoning ordinance and, and so forth. So all of that seems consistent to me. I do believe that we need to diversify our, our tax base. I don't want any more residential growth than frankly, we need to have in order to have some basic level of services in this town center area. I don't know exactly what that number is. Um, four thousand units was thrown out, five thousand units has been thrown out tonight. So, and I think in the general plan, they said if everything was approved today for, for what it's zoned for, there'd be seven thousand units. I don't know how many of those are building permit ready. I suspect it's a relatively small percentage of that. There's very few of them that are building permit ready. But over time, I believe there will be some, there is some inevitability to growth. And our ability to regulate is delegated to us by the state. And this state legislature has demonstrated some proactive ways in which they move forward into this land use arena. The most recent example is they eliminated timeframes on conditional use permits for gravel pits. One of the most hated things for people to, to have, although we have a, quite a few of them in our, our county per capita, I would say. So, so they did that. If you look at what they've done with MITI, the Military Installation Development Authority, they said, you know what? We don't wanna deal with Davis County. We don't wanna deal with Clearfield. We don't wanna deal with Roy. Around the airbase, we're gonna establish the Military Installation Development Authority, which has now moved into Wasatch County. They've done projects down around Camp Williams. The whole inland port is the state legislature saying, we're not gonna deal with Salt Lake City. And their zoning with respect to this area, this is something that we're wanting to attack on a statewide basis. I think if we've, if we handle this area and other areas of the county, although again, this is all we're talking about tonight. And, and I think this is again, the best place to focus this kind of development or density. I think if we do that intelligently and purposefully, that we forestall that kind of a effort. Because I just think if, if the Wasatch Front Regional Council and Envision Utah are correct about their population estimates, the notion that we can just snub our noses and say, no way, you're not coming in here. We have the winds that blow the inversion out every morning and we'll blow that development out that a direction. I think the legislature will proactively come and say, well, we'll show you how you want to handle this. Now, I hope that's not the case. I'd rather move forward and do this our own way, do it intelligently. I like the comments about aesthetics. I think moving forward with night sky ordinances is important. I'm not sure what's in that ordinance on night sky, if anything, but if there's not, you'll probably get another request from me to the planning commission to work on a night sky ordinance.
I think we've already taken that, so I think we'll, we'll put it on our work schedule for this summer.
So those are my, my views generally and.
So, um, I'd, I'd like to comment. Um, I was disappointed that we only had the one developer come forward because I do know we had four at one point who wanted to present. And I want everyone in the room to know that I take it very seriously how this all comes out. Because this is not just the district I represent. This is my ward and if I don't, if you're not in my ward, you're in my building and I hear about it in the hall. If it doesn't go right, either way, so. One of the things that I would like us to talk about that is in the DAT plan, that isn't part of our code currently, is the transfer of development rights. And the only way I see in a zoning situation that has been there for decades at this point, that you're going to change any of the outcome, is to have the ability to have a transfer of development rights ordinance where density can be moved from one direction to the other. I think there needs to be a good understanding of everyone in the room for what is already approved. And what we can do to influence, it is unfortunate to me that there is a development agreement on the south end where the majority of the DAT is talking about. But if there is not trust on both sides of that discussion, what is already zoned to go in there will go in there. And it's not the DAT. So if there is not a beginning spot for some trust and some conversation over what is better and how do you come to a better outcome than what is currently legally allowed, then we're not going to get a better outcome. But that starts with trust on both sides. And that means in order for them to open the development agreement, they have to have the assurance that we are not going to absolutely, you fill in the blank, them over in doing this. The first meeting that I had as an elected official was a group of citizens who took me to Hubbard House and demanded that I work on, demanded that I work on the interchange. And I've done that. And we had good momentum on the interchange. It would be helpful if we had the rest of the council stay on board to the public vote and not have phone calls happen that derail the process. As a community, I think it's the best thing for us to come together around a good plan, but there needs to be trust on both sides. It's essential.
Tina, can I ask a question? I'm not, I'm, I'm sure I'm understanding the TDR ordinance connection.
Transfer of development rights.
No, I know what a TDR ordinance is. I'm not understanding its connection to the town center.
So if we are going to move beyond, if you want a density that isn't there, and I hear, hear this a lot, that you don't like the density that's already there, if you can incentivize someone else to transfer development rights, so what?
To that, to that town center? Okay. You're transferring rights in.
To give us more flexibility of moving density around various areas.
Because we can't downzone.
Yes.
Yes.
If it's okay with you, I, we have an opportunity with, with the public. One of the things that I've noticed tonight is that, um, most people don't know what we know and, and so it generates a lot of questions. If, if everybody's here, can we just do a brief overview of that brown area and kinda give everybody the town center? Lance, Lance gives me the look. Um, and just kinda give everybody an idea of what we're talking about. Because if, if I didn't know the history here, I would look at that area and I would say, what are you guys talking about? Look at all that area that you guys zoned.
So may, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to have you out of the discussion. Do you know the acreage?
Well, let's, oh, the entire area there?
Yeah, including Johnson property and the town, the corners across it, the proposed. Cause I, I view the Johnson property as part of the town center, just kind of by the nature of the development.
By the nature of the development. So what we did, if it's okay, just kinda give, give a review. Forgive me.
Sure.
What, what, what we did is, is, um, we as, as the planning commission and, and the council, we went out to the public, um, four years ago and did a refresh on our general plan. And I didn't know what a general plan was before, so if you don't, just give me some grace to explain it a little bit. General plan is, is a, it's a document that, that paints broad strokes for future land use. As, as Lance, uh, uh, told us before, it just kind of establishes goals. Hey, this is, this is the planning phase. It's the creative phase of, hey, this is kinda what, the way we want the community to go. We, we, we paid particular attention to the DAT because it was never codified into anything. It was just an idea. When I first moved out to Morgan County, the DAT was on the website and I actually thought, I was like, cool. Mountain Green is gonna look like this. I'm gonna move there. And, um, and then I started understanding planning and zoning and, and found out that that was wrong. So, um, what we did is, is we went out, we, we took public comment and we said, okay, there's gonna be kind of a, a, a center of Mountain Green. And we argued for weeks about whether that would be called Town Center. Like, what was another one? We came up with all these different ideas. Village, Village Center. Um, so for, for the public's general knowledge, the, the, um, general plan paints this broad stroke for that area as the goal is a town center. You can't confuse that with the zone town center. So we wrote a zone town center, really, we really should've, in my opinion, we should've named that, that zone DAT. Because that's, that's really what we were trying to say is let's create a zone that meets the vision and goals of, of that DAT. Now, we can't rezone people's land. All we can do is say, hey, we, this is kinda what we want for the general use. And then whoever owns that land can come and they can make petition and application and say, hey, you guys created this town center DAT zone. We'd like to rezone our land to that and, and maybe build that vision that you guys had. That's, that's what we did painstakingly over four years. Now, that little piece, that fifty-two acre piece has been rezoned, but the rest of it is, is not zoned for town center. And as, as Lance reminded us, that doesn't necessarily mean that the other zones that are there can't help us to meet the goals of, of the general plan town zone. But we don't have, we only have control, well, we don't have control over any of it. The landowners have control over that.
We don't have control of the development.
Of the development.
We could rezone it all.
We could, right. And you could, if it was political will of the council to, to go and rezone.
Following your, your commission's recommendation.
Correct. You could do that. I don't know how popular that would be, but.
I don't know either.
It is possible. You're right. Um, but we chose not to go down that path. We chose to go down the path, well, look, if you look at CH and LM over there on the left-hand side, that's been zoned that way for longer than I've been in the county. And they have permitted uses that we, we, we haven't changed, right? Those are, those uses have been there for a, a very, very long time. So really, all we've been focusing on is creating that town center zone and, and getting public impact, uh, input rather, to say, well, what kinda stuff do you wanna see in this area? How do, how do we take the ideas of the DAT and all the public input? How do we create something that, um, is a balance? And I've heard everybody say that. How do we create a balance between, I want no development and I want all the development? Well, somewhere in the middle, there's, there's a common ground. That's what we do as Americans, right? And that's what we're trying to establish. So when you, you invited us here tonight, I'm trying to think of what's, what's our goal between our two teams to say, well, how do we get on the same page for what sort of things that we want to see? Because there's, there's some gaps in the town center zone. Percentage-wise, I heard about, there's some gaps with night sky. There's, uh, there's some gaps with density, moving density around. Are we completely locked into current development agreements? Can we create, um, opportunities for those people that have development agreements to, to, to have like a give and take? So we can meet our overall goals. So those are three takeaways.
So one of the things that I see that's missing, because the, one of the comments was about the airport. And if you know the problem with, with the industrial center around the airport, there has since been development around that airport. And so when I talk, and I've spent, how long has it been? Six weeks? I've been looking for two acres, twenty thousand square feet for a custom-built manufacturing facility for the county. So if anyone knows of property that's available, please contact me after. But they have looked in that very area. And because of the neighborhoods that have been built up around it, they can't, they, they're uncomfortable building that kinda manufacturing over there. So one of the areas as being over economic development, that's one of the areas we're struggling with in the county. Where is that zone? If we've now, there has to be a long-term vision of where that goes. Where's the most appropriate place for it to go? And how do we create an area that's protected so that it isn't? And another ten years coming in, and I don't want manufacturing in our area. That's not what's conducive to what's here now. There needs to be a place for it where it's appropriate in the county, where it can be. And then we keep that in mind going down and we leave that protected access-wise, road-wise. So it, it does build that commercial base. But if we continue to build housing around those zones, we end up in the situation we're at today where we continue to grow residentially and there isn't a way to meet the demand for commercial property because there isn't a viable place for it.
And I think we captured that in the general plan, right? We, we captured that we, we want the future land uses for any commercial growth to be kind of along that corridor to the, to the east of, uh, Mountain Green Village.
But that's the problem is right now there isn't access to it. So there isn't anything that is currently accessible today for demand today in the county. Now, I'm not gonna touch what's, can go, happen in Morgan City. That's its own issue. But when, but county-wide, that's what I'm dealing with, with manufacturers who are contacting me now. I, I can't find anything that there's current access to. So.
And Jeremy's proposal included some industrial space.
And that is zoned that way.
The corridor to the freeway. I think even the Johnson development proposal, prior proposal, not the more recent apartment proposal, had flex space back along that corridor, which was something. The other issue that we have frankly, in this area from my perspective, is a concurrency issue in terms of, the infrastructure development and/or the lack of infrastructure capacity in the area for water, sewer. There was mention of what has the old highway road, I think in connection with the bringing trappers loop through, particularly if they're, when the interchange comes in, that portion of old highway is gonna need to be expanded. You know, and there's obviously costs and expenses associated with it, most of which we would want to put to the developers that are developing that area.
Can we add internet to that, by the way?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Sure, if that's still a relevant technology by the time it comes.
That's true. That's true. So I don't know where we go from here. What sort of things do we need to tighten up? Because we, we have opportunities to go back to the public and have more hearings and, Lance loves writing new ordinances, so we could get him to tighten up some things. What, what sort of things should we, should we be looking for to kind of ultimately, so that when you do get an application for any of these things, what, what sort of things?
So what I see is, is the meetings like tonight, where you do have, so I think it's not just helpful for us, I think it's helpful for the other developers to know what is available, what can happening, what other people's thoughts are, so that there is a conducive, because the last thing that I would like to see is a development in one section that counterbalances. One of the beautiful things about the DAT is that it allowed for consistent use to be in the same area, so that if a commercial property goes in, if a restaurant goes in, that traffic is, is driven to that area, and it can, it can build off the success of another restaurant that goes in there. So without the other developers seeing what, what is planned in all of those sections, they don't know. Is, is this the best spot for this type of commercial activity? Or is it better to, to push that commercial activity over to the other commercial activities in this area so that they can help each other be successful? Because that kind of, those kind of uses should be together. But if we're developing in different sections, we don't get that.
Cohesiveness.
Cohesiveness, that.
What's the, Lance, what's the highest residential density within the Town Center Zone?
It'll be dependent on, there is, there wouldn't be a standard per se, it would depend on the design.
Development agreement. It would depend on the development agreement. That's kind, kind of what we were hoping for, is that, our, our best-case scenario hope was that large chunks of land would be zoned together. So you got 52 acres there, that, that would be one development agreement, right? So that you, so that you guys could decide what's appropriate, I'm spending more time over here, I apologize. So that you guys could decide, what do you think is more appropriate? What's, what is a, if you look at, at, from Roland's Ranch, or Cottonwoods, no, yeah, Roland's Ranch, sorry. What sort of, what do you, how do you want to see that blend out? Right? How do you want to, you want to see, you know, larger density to lower density? That, that's all going to be dependent upon whatever that development agreement looks like.
Well, one of the things, one of the others, besides the transfer development rights, the other thing that's on the table are the impact fees that each one of these residences pay. That, that community park, the regional park, those type, that type of impact fee that's being set aside for a park, can this, can we, should we be discussing it as a group over where those type of accesses, where those type of facilities are appropriate in the zoning that's happening, in the development agreements that are coming forward? Is it time for us to discuss with the developer, we'd like to use part of that impact fee money from what we've already collected, what we know we will collect based on the residential density in this development towards a piece of property that becomes a park, a soccer field, something to service as not only a facility for the residents there, but also to add to the open space and the more open field, the resident, the rural fill of the community? That's what an impact fee is designed to do. At what point in this process, Bobby, is it appropriate to have those kind of conversations?
Well, I mean, I, obviously, I think when we have people come in with specific proposals, I, I think there's a hesitancy from the development community to come in. There's a, there's a view that we're, we're not particularly accommodating to development. And, and maybe that's in fact true. I don't know how a particular vote will come out on any given issue or any given application. Let me ask another question, Lance. The distance from, say, the edge of that CH area to the center or to the extension of Trappers Loop Road, do you know what that distance is? I'm asking because I'm wondering if you could integrate all of that through there and make it more of a walkable, walkable with some trail design that went through. I mean, one of the things that makes these centers successful is if you have enough density around them that they self-populate in the evenings and so forth.
Right.
And so, because if all, I mean, look, you can go to Lancaster, Pennsylvania, where they, they maintain these incredibly beautiful farms with horses and buggies. But even they know they need a town center. And you drive through these fields and you get to a place, and they're not particularly big places, but they have maybe two to four blocks worth of commercial enterprise where they're helping to sustain their tax base with those commercial enterprises. And if we could get away with something like that in the town center, I'm, I'm all for it. If that's, if that's all we need to do to bring in and help diversify our economic town base, that sounds great to me. We just need to, from my perspective, be accommodating to developers that want to come in and do that kind of development. I'm not too concerned about big box retail. I think we are so far, far away from that ever.
We're not.
I don't think we're zoned for it, and I don't think it would come. We don't have the population density. Maybe when all, if all 4,000 of those projected potential units, maybe we would have it, but I'm not even sure then. But I, I would like to see some basic levels of services. I don't need to watch a movie here. But, but a small grocery store would be good, if we had some restaurants, if we, if we could capture some of the sales tax that leaks out of the county in the winter months, unless you buy one of the world's best hot dogs. And even then, I don't know if we capture that sales tax. But those are really good. You know, you put the honey on them, they may be one of the world's best, I don't know.
It's cautious. Well, another, another point with that, so if you look at CH and MD there, if, if the interchange were to go in next year, UDOT would shut that exit down, right?
I've heard that as a, as a possibility, but not necessarily.
The federal highway transportation director that I sit on multiple committees with has told me multiple times, it's not even an option to leave it open. It's not an option.
So it may or may not.
That's what the federal highways.
I'm just wondering how that would, so let's picture a scenario where it's, where it's closed, for example. If, if, so even if it was open, I think the majority of traffic would naturally flow through Trappers Loop, which would draw you right to the, the corner of the Sinclair right now, right? We don't want to lose those chicken straps to you, by the way.
They, Morgan County staple.
They are a staple.
Do I get to throw in, for real, here or two?
So what, how would that impact what, what we heard tonight for proposals, potential proposals for, for CH and MD there? I think, you know, I, I don't think it would, it would hurt it, because most people would just drive their razors down, let's face it, and, and go to those facilities there, or they'll go over to Town Center, catch a cup of coffee or, you know, a meal or something like that. I mean, that, that's kind of the idea. When we went through those tables, we didn't, we were very careful to take public input and not, there, there's just no, there's no room and there's, there's no allowable uses for big box places to come in. So it's not like, you know, Walmart just can't, is not going to go there, you know?
No.
Not only do we not support it, we didn't, we intentionally made sure we didn't zone for those things. So what we, what, what we did zone for was the allowable uses, and, you know, the, the public needs to go and look at those tables and see what those allowable uses are for the town center. Like, again, go back to CH and MD, those, those uses were locked in a long, long time ago. Those are, those uses are what they are.
They are, but, but it, it's also depending on how the development evolved in that Town Center area. If you could coordinate the access through Town Center down into that area, particularly if they end up putting in this recreational facility, establishing that connection between the two, at least as a pedestrian ingress and egress with the crossing of the Little Creek and so forth like that. For me, that, that takes the development and helps make it somewhat of an amenity as well. You know, something that, if done right, is a very nice feature to have.
One more thing, just to point out, if you look at the Town Center, the, what is that, five or eight acres there, Lance, right on, see where the CS is there? Just to the, to the east of Old Highway. So where that, right where that green dot is, is right across the street, that's, that's the Sinclair, right? And so, so to the right of that, 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 that piece right over there, keep going right, that, that kind of weird triangle-looking piece right there, that's already zoned CS, so it's that green area that was just rezoned Town Center. So that CS right now has allowable uses. Right, so someone could come in and request to develop that piece of land, and whatever is allowed in CS could go in there. It doesn't necessarily have the same design standards as Town Center. It doesn't have any.
It's not.
Right, so. I won't tell anybody.
Tell me with the acronym, what's it called? What's CS mean?
Commercial, shop.
Thanks.
So that was years ago, so that would be an area that we would really love the applicant or the owner to come in and say, hey, you know what, I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to be part of this Town Center gig, and I want to make sure that it's cohesive. But the reality is, is we can't make them do that, so that, that kind of scares me. Because we could make all these great plans and then have this.
Yeah, ultimately, they're the ones who invest in our community. And some people would say, we don't want them to invest in our community. I get that, I understand it. But, but they are the risk takers that build the, the homes, the, the commercial structures and so forth that we live in, shop in, and have to look at, you know? We can, we could be more aggressive from my perspective about rezoning properties so that it signals to people, we want you to actually come and do that sort of thing, as opposed to waiting for them to make an application and responding to it. We could be, that's where I say, we could be more deliberate, more intentional about trying to develop and working in this in an intelligent way.
Can, can we have more stand, I mean, can we tighten up our standards? Can we adopt tighter architectural standards? I mean, we do for conditional use permits, we have those. So anything that really would go in CS would have a conditional use permit anyway. That, that would be one way to handle, to kind of keep architectural standards a little more cohesive, so maybe one of the things we can do is develop tighter architectural standards to apply. For conditional uses.
Mike, Mike seems to want to make a comment.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a comment. For the benefit of the public, I know people are getting restless. So I, I did six years on the Planning Commission prior to this gig. And one of the things that I noticed participating in the Planning Commission, and those who are members of the Planning Commission, Roland was previously on the Planning Commission as well, we have a lot of meetings with not a lot of public input. And those, every Planning Commission meeting and every county council meeting, there's an opportunity for you to come and give public input. There's a lot of information available to you on the county website. I would encourage you to go look at the county website. Go to the development, Planning and Development section of the website. Our ordinances are there. A copy of the Mountain Green DAT that was discussed quite a bit is there. Copies of all of our development agreements with every development in the county that has a development agreement is there. There's a wealth of information there. There is a process involved here. So sometimes when we come into these meetings, we get worked up about, you know, the end, the end result, but it's a long process. It's, it's a very lengthy process. We don't go from rezoned to shovels in the ground in a few days, it's typically years. And there's lots of opportunity for you as the public to come in and give input on what you like, what you dislike. That doesn't always mean that, that what's going to happen is, is what you agree with, but it is an opportunity for you. So I'd encourage you to get involved, come to the Planning Commission meetings, talk about it, look at what's there on the county website, and ask questions.
Okay. So going off the mics, we had a group of people here that voiced their opinions, their concerns. And this is where I think our challenge as far as, as a council and Planning Commission, I think this is where our challenge is. Robert and I, Member McCollin and I had, had quite a talk, and we disagree on, on some of the stuff as far as development. Some of you have made comment about the, the storefronts that Lance had, had shown and liked them. And, and I think, personally, I think if, if we can, we can get together and decide, I'm not a person that wants residential on top of any building. If we're going to have commercial, let's have a commercial. If we're going to have residential, have a residential. I'm not for stacking on top of each other. And I think that, personally, I just think that helps with, with the rural. Everybody keeps talking about why they moved here. And I think part of our responsibility, and that's what we're hoping we can get from tonight, is that we can gather from your information how you want your area developed, okay? And, and so I think the biggest challenge that we got is, is making sure that as we, as we go forward, that you, that the residents are comfortable that, no, we are not going to take and cram 400 units into 52 acres. You know, and, you know, Johnsons are a different animal. They have a development agreement. They've already went through the process. They have their rights, and there ain't nothing anyone can do about it right now. You know, and I know, I know that's some of the concern, but everybody needs to understand that. The rest of the, the areas that are coming in, you know, have to go through a, through a development agreement with the county. And I think that's where our challenge is to try and set, get your concerns satisfied with, this is my take, is developers going to come in and try and put as much as they can, the object is just to make money, because that's what they're doing it for. Our responsibility is to make sure that we, we restrict that, that we hold it to where you guys are happy with. I think that's our challenge. Because we've had some people that say, we want development, we got some people saying, no. I've had comments that, hey, I'm in the gate, let's shut it down. You know, we can't do that. I, I did appreciate that one gentleman that said, you know what, we do that with zoning, and that's what we have. Member McCollin and I had a, a discussion as far as the percentages in the Town Center and, you know, where they are. We were kind of surprised that there's not any. So a person could come in and, and do one little commercial building, the rest of it would be residential. It's our responsibility to take your information that you've given us tonight with, you know, the Planning Commission, that's why we wanted them involved in this, and, and make sure you're comfortable with, with what the county is, is proposing in those areas. And that's where our challenge is. And it's a tough challenge. We've, we've had it the whole time. I've been on here, like I said, Member, you mentioned, I've, I've been on the Planning Commission before I came to here. And, and it's a tough deal. People don't start complaining until after the fact, okay? And, and like the rest of them, I appreciate very much your comments. I do. I appreciate you coming and showing interest. But my take from what we were trying to get accomplished tonight is, is just trying to get the Planning Commission and the council on the same page on the direction that we want to go as far as how much density, what we want to include in, in the Town Center. But that's my take.
So I, I guess I would, I would question a little bit on, on how you, I realize there is a development agreement there, but until things are built, we're not done. And there is an opportunity for negotiation. And we, and John and I worked long and hard on those, on those negotiations, but it has to be trust on both sides, and there has to be give and take on both sides. And the council has the, has the ability to do that if we were willing to negotiate. We won't both get everything that we want, but there is an opportunity there, especially with the interchange coming in, to do things differently. I, I would challenge us that we should be open to it.
So I, I agree with that. And let me, let me just, maybe we can ask a couple of questions, Roland. So the, the general plan, as I reviewed it, it's a 10-year-old general plan, it needs to be updated, but even 10 years ago, and then with the updates that arose out of the Planning Commission's efforts, clearly calls for a Town Center in this area. I mean.
Oh, I'm not spitting out, I'm just saying the thought that's developed.
Right. And so I guess, I guess the first question, the fundamental question is, as a council, do we want to support, encourage, or discourage and send away property owners in this area that come to us with plans to develop the Town Center? My personal view is I want to support and encourage it. It's consistent with the general plan. It's consistent with the general plan, I realize there are some people, anything we do affects people, and I understand that it affects them, some more closely than others in terms of proximities to their homes, but this is something consistent with the general plan. It, it seems to have been the long-term vision of a lot of people following multiple public processes. I agreed with the comment, it's very hard to know what the majority is, okay? You know, in terms of views and perspectives, particularly if everybody's not giving all of the information when they're asked the question that leads to the conclusion of whether or not it's a majority or not. It's really difficult to come to that conclusion. My perspective is, we should be intel-, trying to incentivize, move forward, and encourage development of this in a way that is consistent with the general plan and the town center ordinance. I don't know if that's the consensus of the council. So that would be one place to start. Before we talk about what the appropriate density is, from my perspective, it's, do we, as a council, want to encourage it and have the planning commission act consistently with that?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, many times on the planning commission, we do a lot of work, um, gather public input, we, we make the, we, by the way, for those of you that don't know, the planning commission represents all the different communities in, in, uh, Morgan County. I'm from Mountain Green, um, we have military people that are from here, it's, it's a really good balance, it's a good representation, I think. Um, but a lot of times, we, we do a lot of work and then it goes to the council and it doesn't get approved. So what I'd like to see is, we only got one shot at this, right? I mean, it's not like we're talking about 50 years of continuous growth here, it's like we got one shot at, at, kind of controlling what happens here. So how do, how do we do that between the planning commission and the county council? How do we, how do we make sure that we're lockstep along the way, we get consensus so that we don't do all this work on the planning commission and all of a sudden it comes to you and, and then it, it gets, it gets voted down? And then the applicants, I don't know where, you know, where that leaves them, they gotta start all over again? So is there something we can do that we can start looking at more sessions like this, work sessions? This is actually kinda neat, all of us sitting together up here, better than that table, I think, but, um, maybe that's what we need to do, maybe we do, need to start thinking about, well, how do we gain consensus? Maybe we, uh, you know, maybe we come and, and kinda give you a report at the, at the council meeting from, hey, this is what happened to the planning commission meeting, and I know staff does that, but maybe we just kinda give you a general idea of, of the direction that we, we feel like we're headed and, you know, is that, I don't know.
From my perspective, we're the legislative body, you're a recommending body, and, and I, I would understand that frustration, that would irritate me to do all of the work, particularly if it was requested, and then it gets up here and it's like, well, thanks, but we're not gonna act on it.
We're not complaining.
So, to me, that, I know you're not complaining, you're, you're a good soul, but I, I think, I know where Tina is on this, I think she's expressed her point of view, I think I, I try to be clear about what my objectives are and where I'm coming from, some people may hate me for it, that's okay, that's just the way I view, how I view for, you know, advancing public health, safety, and welfare is to plan for our community, including the future members of our community, which may just include our children, you know, and, and places for them to live that have some level of affordability that's at least close to what they make when they graduate from college. Um, so, but I, and Roland, I think you, you're open to it, but not advocating for it, I guess, I don't know exactly where you are on that, but, but Mike, Sarah, Daryl, Robert-
Open to what or not?
Town center.
Well- Town center. That's, that's a done deal. Now, I agree, we need to have the discussions of what we're gonna do in there, but as far as whether we're open to or not open to a town center, that's not a question. That's off the table.
Sorry, we decided, I mean-
That's, that's decided.
Except we haven't taken an action to actually, we, we did on the basis of an application, are we comfortable enough to want the planning commission to make a recommendation to rezone the area, or do we want to wait for the applicants to come in?
I think you wait for the applicants to come in.
I do too.
Okay.
Now, if you want to sit down and get an idea of where we would like to see, and that helps weigh your decisions on what you approve and don't approve, we could definitely have that conversation.
I'd be happy to hear what your perspective is on that. And I don't know that it all has to be tonight, but I, I would like to, to certainly get to the point where we, we have a consensus to move forward, or Robert, call me Bobby for purposes of tonight, you're howling in the wind, you know? And you can howl all you want, but you're not going to get a consensus. And so, that's, I mean, that's kinda the feeling I wanted to get, and some of you people are really quiet.
So, help me understand why you wouldn't want, if that is the designated town center, it's, it's the natural place for the town center to be, help me understand why we wouldn't rezone it for that.
To town center?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we already did.
No, she's talking about-
No, the whole thing.
Oh, you're talking about the whole area?
Oh, the whole area.
Oh, blue line. I got it. Robert, you have to leave your mic. That's Gary's mic.
I'll comment on that, just to kinda weigh in. Um, I think if the, if, if the property owners are notified and they're in agreeance with it, I have no issue in, in moving forward with that. The advantage I see in doing that would be that we would hopefully have some continuity between all of that area, which is going to be part of the problem, if we have multiple landowners and they develop at different times and have different objectives, it's going to be difficult to have, you know, some semblance of continuity.
So, to answer your question, I've got just one main reason why I wouldn't do it, and it's the same thing I've been, um, discussing for quite some time now. Sorry, Lance. I, just the one reason, and, and that is that we are sitting here, seven members on the council, seven on the planning commission too, right? From all over this county, and we are designing a community for somebody else. We're telling Mountain Green what their community will look like. I think Mountain Green should get to make those decisions, and I think we should hold off and let them do that when it's their community.
The problem that you've got with that-
Now, we already have the town center there, we already have that development agreement with Johnsons, those things aren't changing, some of that zoning has not changed, we can't do anything about that. That's where I, and this is my opinion, you asked for my opinion, right?
I did.
This is my opinion, that's the discussions we should be focusing on, and we shouldn't be expanding our, our control over more and more and more of Mountain Green when, I don't know when it'll happen, but it's inevitable that that's going to be its own community someday. That's going to be an incorporated community, and when it's, when it's the, when it's an incorporated community, then they decide how the rest of their community is planned. That's-
Chair, can I- Okay, hold it.
So, Robert, I guess you don't get my opinion, because I'm not allowed to talk, only the public can talk.
No, I, I appreciate your perspective.
If, if you remember, we tried to make a second planning commission for Mountain Green, it is not allowed by state code anymore. We are, that, we're it, we are who the planning-
I never asked you to make a planning commission for Mountain Green, I asked you to let them decide it when they become a community.
But until, until then, we still are going to grow, whether we are incorporated or not, we are going to grow, and these areas will be, will become the de facto town center, whether Mountain Green incorporates or not. And to not be planning ahead for that community is to the detriment of the community, because it will, it will grow, whether we address it or not, it will grow.
Okay, now, um-
Can I make a comment on that real quick?
On which part?
The Mountain Green, uh, Mountain Green residents' input into this.
This part, yeah.
So, just, just a comment on that. I'm from Mountain Green, I'm on the planning commission, and I'm kind of insulted to think that I'm not involved with planning in Mountain Green. I know that's not your take, but the reality is, is we do a lot of work gathering people's input, and like Member Newton said, people are rarely here. So, to, to brush that aside, to say that we have not included Mountain Green in this is, it's not true, we've put, we've put a lot of work into this. So, we do have a planning commission with people from Mountain Green on it, in fact, I'm the chair. So I have a lot of input into what's going on, and we, we are, we are taking public input. All that public input has been put into the ordinances that we painstakingly wrote. To say that moving forward, we need more public input on something that they've already given four years of public input on, I don't know that we have that kinda time to say, oh, well, okay, we've written an ordinance for, for town center, we're gonna do a public hearing, five people show up, the same five people, and, and, and then we listen to comment, it's after the ordinance has already been written. I don't know if I'm, I'm communicating that right, but of course we want public input, but we've, we've taken years and years of public input, now it's time for us to, to go, okay, how do we piece this thing together?
Uh, and I agree with that, I think the planning, the planning commission has made a great effort to advance, um, general plan as well as an ordinance with respect to the town center. And right now, with all due respect to Robert's perspective, we are the land use authority, we do have the decision-making authority, and I think with that authority comes a responsibility to try to plan it intelligently and, and move forward intentionally.
Then you completely misunderstand what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
But I'll repeat myself, because I won't get shouted down by the public again, so I'm done.
Okay, so Member McCollum-
Guys, make sure you bring the right people every time.
So, so are we looking at trying, I mean, so from, from this discussion we've had, with the comments that we've had, are we looking at trying to tune up the town center zoning?
I, I think there are some comments that I've heard tonight that I think would be helpful with respect to tuning up the town center. I think I, from my perspective, the dark sky ordinance should be a part of the town center ordinance. I think we could potentially talk about percentages. Frankly, before we move forward on a county-initiated rezoning of the property, I would wanna look at those development agreement provisions, just to make sure I fully understand how that works, um, because I, I don't want to rezone it all and then have somebody come in, okay, here's our development agreement, take it or leave it. I think your intention is for it to be more of a negotiated process, and they come in with a specific plan-
Yeah.
And I, I just wanna look at that, would wanna look at that before we move forward with any further rezoning of that area.
There, there's not much left, it's really-
Yeah, it's, we're talking about CS right there, that's all we're talking about.
Well, there's some A20 up there, right?
Yeah.
Well-
A20, yeah.
But I, I would bring up again, I would like to see the transfer of the development rights, and then a part of the process where the impact fees for, for regional and community parks is part of the conversation of how you maintain the openness of that area with the, the funds generated from that area.
That's something you can do, I'm, I'm just curious, I've never heard it. So we could, so if a developer came in and, we've already put open space kind of requirements in there-
But this is the, the county-owned property at this point, because we are the county at this point, but there are, there are community park impact fees that are collected from every building permit, there are regional park impact fees-
Make a part of the development agreement.
So would the county have to buy land in order to do that?
That's the point, that's why you collect an impact fee.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Before we move on from the, the dark sky, instead of just having it for town center, I think it should be a county-wide ordinance, because there's other parts of this county that would benefit from the dark sky ordinance.
I agree.
Not just town center. Make it a county ordinance.
Coggin Valley just did one last year, and it was very thought out and very intense, so I would suggest looking at Weaver County and looking at that, because, I mean, they really in-depth researched it, so it would be a good base to start from.
We do have some standards we can apply right now, they're just not nearly as tight as they should be, or could be.
And also, the problem with percentages is being brought up, residential, the council can't agree, and so it's very frustrating from a planning commission to try to come up with a percentage when the legislative body is not in agreement. So we're just beating our heads against the wall. So, until we get you guys on the same page and make a recommendation filter back down to us and we can move forward, but I don't think you guys are in agreement on what is a good percentage, good mix of commercial, residential.
Well, Member McCollum and I talked about that, um, about trying to figure out how to do percentages for residential, commercial, and that, that was part of our discussion.
Is that for each parcel that comes through, each landowner? So if it's a five-acre parcel and you say 20%?
Well, that's part, that's part of our discussion, is how do you, how do you address-
Yeah, I think-
On such small parcels?
It's harder on a small parcel, on some of these larger ones you could. I think, for example, on the Johnson property, when they came in and made their alternative proposal, they were increasing the amount of commercial over what was previously approved for resident, for commercial and residential. So they were adjusting the mix more to a commercial, and I think what Tina was saying was that if we have someone that comes in and makes that proposal, that's something we should wholeheartedly say, yes, we, we like that adjustment, we would prefer to see some more of these commercial elements. Now frankly, if, if they came in and did the core of the town center, then the other ones may, may be more residential than, 'cause, like I said, I don't know that we need a massive town center in this entire area, I think we need some town center area.
Yeah, it, it gets confusing with the zoning, because town center, when you hear town center zone, you think that that whole area is town center, but the town center zone is very comprehensive, it's got lots of stuff in it.
It's got multiple elements.
Yeah, it doesn't mean just the, the commercial center, that, it gets confusing to the public.
That's where, when-
I hate to bring up a dirty word in the process, but it seems like a lot of our, our discussion moving forward and in development, especially with the developers and what's going in there hinges on that interchange, and again, I apologize for bringing up that dirty word. But my, my concern, and Tina, you've worked with Chris Chestnut, you know how long it takes to get a, a corridor study, it's taking a long time. I, I have really big concerns about how long it's really gonna take to get an interchange in Mountain Green.
The alignment was key, having the alignment was key, having the property purchased has been key to preserve that corridor so that it is there. Um, having that property completely purchased now is big for the plan going forward, I think. Um, I would like to see the EIS, I know we've pushed the EIS, I'd like to see it in 2020 the way I've been told that it's coming. Um, after that, the Olympics is probably our best bet for getting it in, and I'm kinda hoping the Olympics comes, whether we get the interchange or not. But whether or not the interchange goes in, the overlying road pattern for the developments on all sides have got to align, and that needs to be part of the conversation of how are these roads fitting together through the whole area? If you're, if you've got four quadrants with four different developers, eventually it's going to be one town. Those roads need to align, or we're just creating a bigger problem.
We could do a micro look at the transportation plan within the area and at least plan a proposed road network.
Could we do a transportation overlay for the whole town center district, just to kinda give some guidelines that any developer would have to be congruent, I guess, or they have to line up?
Yeah, I mean, that's where Mr. Odom's correct, right now we have the land use authority to move forward and do those kinds of things.
Okay.
Okay, so Member McCollum, my question to you is this, so update Mountain Green town center zoning ordinance. So what was your objective from, from having this combined, I mean, what are you trying to get out of this so we can move forward?
Well, as, as I indicated in the beginning, for me, it was principally an information gathering opportunity. I wanted to, I, I frankly had hoped that the other three corners, I'll call it, of the town center area would have came in and done a presentation, 'cause I wanted to kinda see what their ideas were and, and, and that didn't happen, okay? So that part of it, I'm frustrated with, but I do appreciate the input of the members of the community, I think there were a lot of good ideas discussed, there's, there's also frustration that's, that's expressed with respect to having any development occur, and, and I'm trying to be sensitive to that, recognizing however that in terms of our general plan and land use plan, this is where we have to focus our efforts for this kind of development. There's no other place in the county, there's a couple of small ones around Peterson and Milton and some really small areas, but the energy, if there's energy at all for this on, as I understand it from the development community, is more in Mountain Green. So, the information gathering from members of the council, from members of the public, and from those who did present has been helpful to me. I think the recommendations that we've discussed just recently with respect to the tightening- respect to the tightening up some aspects of the town center zone would be a good follow-up on. And then, you know, at some point, it'd be nice to reach a consensus about whether we want to move forward with an actual county-initiated rezoning of this area, or if we want to wait for applicant submissions. And at the very least, I would hope that we would clearly communicate what our desires are and whether or not we want to see such applications.
Okay. So do you have that? Member Ross?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So I've got all those takeaways. Can I respond?
Well, okay, so if we have a Planning Commission, I guess my question is to the council. Are we okay having the Planning Commission look at those issues? Do we want to talk about them as a council and say, "Yes, we want this one. No, we don't want this one"? What's your take?
I think you can't go wrong with more communication.
I'm good with the Planning Commission going through those items.
I'm good with them going through them as well.
Okay, I agree. All right. Okay, so let's hear our Planning Commission chair's list.
Okay, so to start with, we have kind of an open work list that we carry from Planning Commission meeting from one meeting to the next, and we review that, and we say, "Okay, what's on our agenda?" So that we're not just answering applications. We're trying to do these things. So we will, this is what I have to add to that work list. Night sky zone, potential for moving density from one development agreement to another. There's some verbiage I need to get from you guys on that.
Transfer development agreement.
Tighter architectural standards, really to think through how can we apply that. Percentages of residential in the town center. We have a discussion on that, but I think we're going to need the council's input, a lot of council input on that. And then the last one was a transportation overlay for that area to make sure the roads line up.
Okay, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
TDR.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
You okay with that, Member McCollum?
Yes.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make one more comment if I can. I think it's, this is the first time we've been able to really get together as a Planning Commission, and although not every member of the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to chime in, just having us all here together is very, very important. I don't think we've done enough of this in the past. So I would just like your input on different ways that we can do this. I mean, we're both striving for the same goals, and a lot of times, we're doing things that you guys have asked us to do. That's the majority of what we do. It's, okay, you guys have asked us to go look at the viability of a transportation overlay, for example. We've put a lot of work and effort into that. In the past, we're very good at doing that, and we get you a deliverable, a really good product. But I don't know that we've really gotten your input along the way in the past. And I'm looking for opportunities that we can kind of give you status reports and get more input at the Planning Commission meeting so that we're not going all the way over here when we know there's no consensus in the county council at all for that direction. I want to be able to work together. I just don't know what that looks like. I mean, we don't have to do things the same way the whole rest of the country does. Maybe we can get together more often and have more work sessions. You know, I don't know. Takes a lot of time and work, but we're here.
We could maybe talk about it and maybe schedule something on a periodic basis. I don't know what the quarterly or every, twice a year or something like that, you know? Maybe we can talk about that as a council on another agenda. Thanks for coming, though. We appreciate your input.
Thanks for having us.
For your work on...
Hey, there's no other comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Member Newton, who was the second? Member McCollum? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.